The City Council for the City of Rollingwood will come to order Wednesday, December 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We will begin with Agenda Item Number One, Roll Call. Ms. Brown?
Brooke Brown.
Phil McDuffie.
Sarah Hudson.
Gavin Masco being core and present, we will move on to public comments on items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, well, I have one for you, really for the community, because I think City Council already is aware of some bittersweet news that we have, that I have to share with the community. It's mainly bitter for us, but it is sweet for our city administrator, Ms. Ashley Wayman. We are unfortunately going to lose Ashley to another city in San Antonio, and she has had a great offer to get back a little closer to her home and her family and start a new career opportunity in that direction in Barrett County. So, we wish her the very best. Before I get texts and calls, I did do everything in my power. And I did, I think it's, at least got you to pause for a day or two to reconsider. But at the end of the day, I could not compete with family. I had nothing to offer in that regard. So, we'll miss you greatly, and she will be with us through our next City Council meeting next month, and we'll be working on a transition plan in the meantime. So, you want to say anything?
I'm not prepared to give public comments today. At the next meeting, I will be prepared. I'm still kind of processing, so.
So am I.
Thank you all.
Okay, with that, we will move off of public comment and on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I will pause before I take that motion.
Can we take them up separately?
Yes, we can take them up separately. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Discussion Possible Action on the Minutes from November 19th, 2024, Special City Council Meeting. Recognize Ms. Hudson.
There it is. We are missing something on item two, because it says, in the response, whatever the action that was taken, it says, "To council members to the City of Rollingwood, City Council, Councilmember Phil McDuffie, period." I believe that's supposed to be Councilmember Phil McDuffie seconded.
That would be correct.
So.
We will make that correction.
We'll make that correction. Thank you for that catch, and now I'll take a motion.
Move approval with the noted correction.
You have a motion to move approval with noted correction. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Being three ayes, no nays, motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Discussion and Possible Action on the Minutes from November 20th, 2024, City Council Meeting. Take a motion or?
Move approval.
Move approval. Motion by Ms. Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. McDuffie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Being three ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Moving on to the regular Agenda, Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion and Possible Action to approve the Rollingwood Women's Club 5K Run Event on March 30th, 2025. I think we do have someone here, Ms. Williams, to talk to us about this. And I know Ms. Wayman has been in contact, but talk to us about it.
Hi, I'm Mary Williams. Thanks for having me here. I actually, I'm a Westlake resident, so. The mean streets over there on Sugar Creek Drive. But again, thanks for having me here tonight, obviously here to request the issuance of a permit for the annual 5K. This is a revival of a prior race. I think, I didn't live here then, but I think it ended maybe 2018, 2016, somewhere in there. So, it's been a little while, but this, this race would basically run the same course as prior years, and we would have this event be open to the public, so it wouldn't just be Rollingwood residents. We're hoping to get around probably 300 runners altogether if we get the race plus the kids' fun run. The 5K race would obviously be about three miles, all through the neighborhood, and I think you all have the route in your packet, but let me know if you haven't seen that. We will have water stations that'll be manned by Women's Club volunteers. We plan to get liability, separate liability insurance just for the race, and the race timing is something that we would have managed by a third party. So, in addition to the 5K, we're also hoping to get permission to also hold the associated kids' fun run. I think that's going to be about a mile. And then also use of the park and the upper and lower parking lots from basically around eight until 11, so that we could have breakfast tacos and some live music, I think, in the park. And then, obviously, volunteers and certain personnel would need to park in those parking lots while this is going on. Secondly, we're looking for permission to display some banners on the baseball field gate. And I don't know if you all know Scotty, but Scotty Downing is the one who's the big race organizer, and I did confirm with her today that the content of those would just be to advertise the race in general. I think it's called "Life is Good in the Hood," "Good in the Wood," maybe? "Good in the Wood 5K." And so, it'd have the name of the race and then also thank our sponsors. So, right now, I think Independence Title is a sponsor, and I'm sure they'll be working on getting more sponsors as we go. The proposed date of the race is Sunday, March 30th. And then, the other thing we're looking for permission for is some help from the police and public works to close the roads and monitor the roads during the race and then reopen the roads. We expect to need extra trash cans and extra porta-potties in the park, but those are things that the Women's Club would manage and pay for. So, we don't really expect financial impact to the city, because the race proceeds should cover our costs. And then, any proceeds from the race over and above the cost of the race would go to benefit the City of Rollingwood through the Women's Club initiatives.
Great. Great explanation.
The last thing that Scotty asked me to do is ask you guys to register for the race, if we're allowed to have it.
I'm registered.
Oh, yay. Great, great.
And a friend.
Okay, great.
I'm not. I'm not. I don't do a lot of running.
You can walk. You can walk. You do the fun run.
Okay, great. Great presentation. Anything to add?
Looks like they covered everything. Only thing I saw, also, some inflatables, it looks like, in the kids' area, but.
Yes. Yeah, and those will be manned by whoever the vendor is, so they'll be safe.
Great tradition. Glad to see it coming back. Council, any questions or I'll take a motion?
I have a couple of questions. We've never had it on a Sunday morning before. Why does it move to Sunday morning?
I think a lot of people felt like, especially runners, usually road races are held on a Sunday or a Saturday morning. Like, having it in the evening, we felt like there would be much, a lot more traffic to deal with, with the closed roads. And then, also, anyone that has kids usually is going to have some kind of conflict on a Friday night with a sports practice or just other activities. So, we all felt like Sunday morning would be a time we'd probably get more participation. So, that was our rationale.
I guess my concern with that is that we're asking city staff to come in and man it, and that's kind of their weekend, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that Friday night's that much better of a time to ask people to come in.
Well, then, you're asking them to stay late, instead of having to drive all the way here and drive all the way home after they work. So, it's extra time for staff in order to get here and man it.
I think the Women's Club was planning to handle the overtime associated with this, too, so if that's helpful, that's the information that I have from Scotty, that was the plan.
And that is helpful, and I think would be something we'd follow up with you on.
Okay, sure.
And the, I don't remember the last time I participated in the race, whatever, or watched it, but I know that the course has been different than what is proposed in there. And there's a good portion of that that's not in Rollingwood?
That's right. It's in Westlake Hills, so we're separately getting permission from them, too.
And is there a reason why we're venturing out of Rollingwood for the course?
I don't know the rationale. I know this is, this is the map that I have is actually from 2016. So, and it also encompasses Brady, which is Brady and Ridgewood, which is, I think, the main part that would be in Westlake Hills. So, I think there is some precedent.
Some of it may be City of Austin, too, so.
It doesn't look to me like it goes that far down Ridgewood, but I'm not sure exactly where the. I know the boundary after you pass Hatley is Austin, City of Austin, but I don't know that it's.
Is it past? It's not past Hatley, is it? It's before you get to Hatley.
Okay, so there may be 100 feet or so in the City of Austin, but we'll make sure that we have their permission as well. So, Colin Harvey is actually the person who was supposed to be here tonight, but it's his wife's birthday, so I'm pitch hitting a little bit. So, I can find out from him, but my understanding is that they are aware of the different municipalities that it would touch. So, I believe that is in process as well. I know they've already talked to Westlake Hills.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Council? Happy to take a motion.
I would move approval of the request for permission to conduct the Women's Club 5K Run on March 30th, 2025. It's outlined by Ms. Williams.
A motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Ms. Duffy. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Being three ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion and Possible Action on a Resolution Approving a Project and Authorizing Funding of the Rollingwood Community Development Corporation for the Rollingwood Park Tree Planting Project that will enhance recreational and community facilities pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Sections 501, 152, and 501, 073. Ms. Wayman to lay out the agenda item.
Yes, the Park Commission made a request to the RCDC for the tree planting project. This is the same project that you all saw during the budget process, and it came as an exceptional item, but was not approved at the time for funding, and instead was, you know, there was a request to see if RCDC might be interested in funding that. The Park Commission discussed it, took it to RCDC. RCDC did pass their own resolution approving this project. All expenditures and projects of the RCDC do need to be approved by the City Council, and so that is the ordinance before you today that would be approving that project. This also should have all, they currently have $50,000 in their budget for park projects, so this should actually be covered already without the need to do a budget amendment. But if anything, if anything else changes and they have any other park projects, we'll make sure all the necessary budget amendments come along with that. But this covers both the budget side and the project side.
Thank you, Ms. Wayman. Any questions for Ms. Wayman? Happy to take a motion and continue discussion.
Move.
Go ahead. I'm happy to do it, and we can still take the question.
Move approval of a Resolution Approving RCDC Resolution and the Associated Project, RCDC Resolution 2024-12-09-06, Authorizing Funding for a Park Improvement Project in the Rollingwood Park.
Thanks, -1805.
I beg your pardon?
It's fine. The resolution number is 22, 2024-12-18-05.
Oh, I'm looking at, the agenda item says 06, so that's corrected.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Mr. McDuffie. I think, Ms. Brown, did you have discussion?
I have no discussion. I recommend approval.
Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Being three ayes, no nays, motion carries. That will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Discussion and Possible Action on a Recommendation from the Park Commission Regarding Accepting Donations for Rollingwood Park. Have Ms. Wayman explain the item.
Absolutely. So, the Park Commission has been looking for different creative ways to get some fundraising efforts added to the Park Commission, and they have come up with the idea of forming the Friends of Rollingwood Park, not necessarily a true separate, you know, entity of any sort, but as a way to kind of get the word out about being able to donate to the park. I know in the past, we had a few people that had leftover on their utility bills. We used to have a way for you to donate to the park on your utility bill, so you could have a recurring donation. I think between us going to AWR to do our billing and bringing it back in-house, that somehow got lost, but now we do have the ability to do that, because we do our own billing. And so, they have proposed this small kind of blurb to explain sort of what that, what the intention is and with the different, how they want to use it for exclusively beautifying and preserving the park. And they offer, they would like to offer a one-time donation or a recurring donation that could be added to their utility bills. They've all talked about a lot more great things to start with and to go with in the future, but for now, this is kind of where they want to start. And we just told them we would bring this to City Council to make sure everybody was okay with us publicizing this. Our plan would be to put it on the new resident application, so when someone comes in to sign up for a water account, they would see a page that talks about, "This is the Rollingwood Park, and here's how you can donate if you're interested," as well as we could send it out on a water bill for the existing customers.
Yeah, it seems like a relatively painless and a good idea, and we do have a, we do have a line item to handle this for the donations, so. Yes, ma'am?
I saw that the fiscal impact said donations would be put into a specific line item. I would, I'm wondering if line item is the, don't we need a separate fund, a designated fund? I don't know if designate, I know that there's a legal designation fund, but don't we want to have it where it's not part of our budget process? It's handled outside the budget and is used for projects that are recommended by the Park Commission and approved by the Council.
Yeah, we can have that discussion.
From those funds.
Yeah, we can have that discussion, and that may be the case. I actually inherited that line item years and years and years ago when I started doing the budget, and we've never had anything in the line item, so we've never had to really have this discussion, so. And that, but that may be the case. We'll consult with legal and also talk to Abel about it and see what the auditors would recommend.
Yeah, currently, it is in the general fund, and I think the thought is unless there's really enough for a large project, it wouldn't be being set aside for, you know, a large capital project. It would be more just counted as, you know, revenue coming in to offset the park expenses, but we can absolutely look at how we want to, you know, keep that separate.
And it probably would need to be, if we had a significant, I mean, if this caught on like gangbusters, then we probably would need to handle it separately, because it would, technically today, it would just be going into the general fund, and you could do with it whatever you want, and that wouldn't be the right thing to do. So, we probably would need to separate it out, but it's never been in, like I said, we've never had to deal with this, so. It'd be a great problem to have to problem solve.
You know, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding from people who donate.
Right, yes, no.
I think that's the main concern. And just knowing, you know, if, 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 let's say, $20,000 accumulates and, or gets donated, and people say, "Well, why can't we use that to do a bench?" Or, "Why can't we use that to do that?" And we go, "Oh, that was spent on salaries slash budget, period." I think I was, that's what I want to make sure we clarified from the outset.
Or, it's not out of the realm of possibility. We certainly wouldn't do this, but it could go in there. "Oh, well, we spent that on salaries to do things in the park." I mean, and that's really not what anybody's giving it for, so. Yeah, I agree with your concern.
My understanding, and one of the reasons I am in favor of this, is it's earmarked purely for maintenance. It's not for capital improvement projects and things of that nature. And partly from speaking to various people in the park, they're kind of like, you know, when, when, for instance, I've been told by our staff that, you know, the various bags and fertilizers and things like that that we use on the fields are costly, and people want or have expressed a desire to have a higher level of service there, and that they would be willing to contribute to that. And so, it's supposed to be earmarked purely for maintenance. Capital improvement projects and things like that would go through a whole nother process.
And we did talk about how we keep those people, the people who are donating up to date. We would, you know, have a webpage that talks about, you know, here's the different kind of things that your donation has funded, and we could talk about when we do like a full playground mulch refresh, when those are, you know, sometimes kind of costly or things like that, you know, large-scale like field maintenance. I think we could, we would, they would plan to keep those people up to date with, you know, what their money is going to. And we did talk about the whole, the total park budget is, I think, over $100,000 roughly, and that we assume that we would never surpass that in donations in a year, so it would, it would be able to offset those revenues. So, that was just kind of the discussion we had at the Park Commission meeting.
So, butterfly garden plants, that sort of thing would all be considered maintenance?
Well, the, the, the description doesn't include the word maintenance. It's beautifying and preserving, so.
Well, it does under fiscal impacts, it says, to offset costs for park maintenance.
I would think if we use it for fertilizers for the butterfly garden, I don't know about replacing plants. I suppose if we had to replace plants and things like that.
Is funding the plants.
What's that?
The Women's Club to date has funded.
They funded the initial, yeah, the initial planting of the plants and stuff like that. What I've, once again, this hearsay, what I've been told through the grapevine is that there isn't a great interest in further substantial funding of that from the Women's Club this year, just this year. Like, I think they're looking at other projects, so. So, yeah, I don't know about butterfly garden, but I think any place in the park where we need, for instance, you know, I think it's more for fertilizer, maybe adding turf, you know, fixing various things in the park, but really maintenance, not large capital improvement projects.
I'm just thinking, used exclusively for beautifying and preserving flowers and butterflies would be a good, a good part of that.
For sure. I mean, I would think that'd be appropriate.
Well, the good news, if you, you're just, would be taking action on approving the accepting of the donations, and then we will figure out the expenditure. We'll figure out the expenditure piece of it. I'll recognize public comment.
Dave Bench, one Randolph. It's more of a question than a comment. I'm just wondering if something like this could be set up as a 501(c)(3)?
It could, but the city is not volunteering to do that.
Well, a donation to the city is also tax deductible.
It is tax deductible. Yes, it is.
Ah, enough.
So, same, same thing is accomplished.
Same thing, less paperwork.
Okay, check that out a little closer. Thank you.
If it's not, don't tell my CPA that. Okay, take a motion. Motion to approve the Park Commission recommendation?
So moved.
You have a motion to approve the Park Commission recommendation by Ms. Hudson. Is there a second? You have a motion by Ms. Hudson, a second by Mr. McDuffie. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Being three ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Discussion and Possible Action on Proposed Amendments to the City's Code of Ordinances Regarding Yard Projections in the Residential Zoning District. I'll start with Ms. Wayman.
Yes, so at the last, well, this, this item has actually been kicked around a couple of times between Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, this actually also, I'm sorry, want to mention that it came from a CRCRC recommendation, and so at the last city, the last P&amp;Z meeting, they kind of came up with the final form of this ordinance, which is the first attachment you'll see in the packet. We have also had a second amendment come in, if you'll look at the last attachment, and I also have that printed here for you all to look at, because it came in a little bit late, is some proposed amendments to that language. Both have been approved by legal, so we believe they both accomplished the goals of the Planning and Zoning Commission from their last meeting. But they went ahead and sent this on to City Council as a, "Yes, we are in favor of moving forward with this." And so, some actions you might be able to take tonight would be to go ahead and put this through the public hearing process at the next available date, or make any additional changes or requests that you would like to.
Has this alternate wording gone through P&amp;Z?
The, I guess neither of them did. What the P&amp;Z recommendation was, is they kind of just, they saw some previous language, and then they gave some suggestions for cleaning it up, but they hadn't actually, like, wordsmithed it at that time. So, we took it back, applied that, you know, their recommendations to the language, and then kind of further refined that, those recommendations. So, both of them are new language from what was at the P&amp;Z meeting, at their last meeting, but they're consistent with their recommendation.
I didn't think it was, because I thought P&amp;Z had recommended not allowing the projections other than the eaves any closer than 10 feet.
And that's in, yes, and that is in the language. Yeah, the recommendation from P&amp;Z was to basically not refer to ordinary projections anymore, take out ordinary, because they felt that that wasn't very clear, and so that, that section of this has been removed. And then, that first sentence has been added that says, "No building feature other than an eve or roof extension may be closer than 10 feet from a property line."
But that's not what the bottom sentence says.
Right, I mean, they're, I think that's kind of a catch-all for any other, I mean, the first one would apply. So, you know, nothing can be there. I did, I also had a question on whether the last.
Is that not conflicting? The first underlined sentence and the bottom underlined sentence? Well, then, why is the second line there?
That, which second line are you referring to?
The last.
So, the, in E, the first line says, "No building feature other than an eve or a roof extension may be closer than 10 feet from the property line." The added sentence at the end says, "Any building feature other than an eve or a roof extension may not extend into any required yard more than a maximum of two feet."
Are you looking at the alternate language or the ordinance language?
I'm looking at the alternate language.
Okay, the alternate language, why it was proposed, is if you look back at, and I've drafted it, if you look back at the prior language, the last sentence, "Any building feature other than a roof or eve may not extend into a required yard more than a maximum of two feet." So, that covers everything other than a roof or extension. If you look at the.
So, this would, this is supposed to cover front, rear, and side yard that's greater than 10 feet?
Yes.
Yeah, but it seems confusing to, the way it's worded.
We, what came, what was presented, and I, I don't know, I'm getting confused now between which version you're looking at.
The one that's sitting on our, on the diocese.
What, does it start with "no building feature" underlined? Okay, then that is the language that I drafted, and it is, the last sentence is redrafted so that it would, would maintain the current prohibition that there be no projection of a building feature other than an eve or roof into a required yard more than a maximum of two feet. If you look back at what was in the draft ordinance, it uses. it uses, uh, it has the phrase in a required yard of twelve feet or greater. And so there was a gap, I want to fin, I want to finish, there's a gap in that language between the yard greater than twelve and a half feet and a yard of ten feet, because you can have a yard anywhere from ten feet. On a side yard, it can be anywhere from ten feet to fifteen feet. So what I was trying to do was to eliminate the confusion that was in the draft ordinance with the twelve point five feet.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion then to clarify this? Because I think it would be more clear if we put that bottom sentence first and say any building feature other than an eve or roof extension may not extend into any, any required yard more than a maximum of two feet. And then say, in addition, no building feature other than a eve or roof extension may be closer than ten feet from a property line.
I would agree.
Because that way, that way, to me, it, it doesn't seem to be contradicting, it's like building upon.
Okay, I'll have you, if you would, it sounds like you've got that written down. I would take a.
I don't, but.
Okay. Well, she stated pretty clearly. Can you, you got it? Okay. So make a motion on what you just stated, you don't have to restate it. Make a motion on that, adopt the change to the document as presented, and then I'll recognize you to make a motion on the overall approval.
Okay. I move, we modify section one oh seven dash, the proposed wording of section one oh seven dash seven six E as previously stated, to move the last sentence to the first of that section. And then say, in addition, comma, no building feature, and continue.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Clarifying question, I think you're, you're saying, using the wording from the alternative draft, not the ordinance draft.
Yes.
Correct.
I would second the motion.
You have a motion by Ms. Hux- Hudson, a second by Ms. Brown, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Being three ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, you have an amended, you have the amended language before you now. And I'm happy to take a motion to accept the, uh, accept the amended, um, amended resolution.
We will not need to be accepting the resolution just yet, or the, uh, the ordinance, this will need to be sent through the public hearing process.
Okay.
It has not yet gone through the public.
So your motion would be then to send it through the public hearing process?
So we would just adjust the wording in the proposed ordinance to match this?
Yes, the thing that's going.
And that's what will go to the public.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a separate motion for that?
Yeah, just. At your first conven, at, at your, at your next available.
Well, it will not be able to go to the January eighth meeting because we've already sent out the notices for that public hearing. So we'll have to get it on the next meeting.
Is, is it too late to, to send a second notice for that meeting?
Um, it is a twenty day, I think, yes, I think our deadline was yesterday to get every, or today to get everything sent. Tomorrow. The deadline is tomorrow to get everything sent. And getting a citywide notice out in one day is probably not gonna happen, I'm sorry. So we'll get it, um, if possible, we could get it on to, because it's already been talked about by P and Z and city council. We could get it on the February P and Z meeting and then maybe tag it on to the February, um, city council public hearing that's already scheduled. Because that, that one's among that, so.
You've got more time.
And we'll have time for that.
That sounds good. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yes.
Okay, hopefully.
Okay. Motion, we have a motion? Yes, ma'am.
I would move that the, uh, we send the proposed changes to section one oh seven dash seven six. The draft ordinance with those proposed changes is outlined in Ms. Hudson's motion, uh, that we approve that for public hearing for, uh, P and Z and the council.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Mr. McDuffie, further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Being three ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, council. Moving on to agenda item number eight. Agenda item number eight, report from the CRCRC regarding drainage, impervious cover and floor area ratio. Uh, recognize Ms. Wayman, and then I think we have Mr. Bench here to continue.
In the packet is the proposed, uh, floor area ratio drainage and impervious cover report from the CRCRC. That report went to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting, and I'll just, uh, read the motion here so to be clear. Um, is that they moved to submit the report with hesitation on endorsing the creation of another CRC or C like community-driven approach without further discussion. Um, so basically, they liked the direction that the motion and the, the report were going in, um, but they weren't necessarily sure about the actual creation of a separate group. And I can, uh, let Mr. Bench cover more if there's more, okay.
Okay.
So we are not posted for discussion or action or anything else, so we just.
So there's your report.
We just got it.
You got your report, uh, and I would, um, with the new, newly announced transition, um, I would ask for a pause on anything too new, in terms of, uh, task forces or groups for a while. But anyway, that is your report. With that, we will move off of agenda item number eight and move on to agenda item number nine, discussion of possible action on a recommendation from the utility commission regarding grinder pumps. Uh, and we have Phil here, uh, Ms., do you want, or you want Ashley?
I, I can do it.
Okay.
So after extensive discussion with the utility commission, they didn't have any strong feelings as to any direction on how we uh, either bill those who have grinder pumps, whether we take no action and basically have the community as a whole absorb the cost, or whether we do some kind of a hybrid between that. So they, they put it back onto the council to make this decision. Um, and if, if everyone wants to know more about grinder pumps and how that all goes down, then I'm here to give you what, what knowledge I've been able to assess. But basically, I think, how many, how many, we have a hundred?
About a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty households have grinder pumps.
So it's like twenty-five percent.
Yeah, they're, they're necessary for when you're basically to get the sewage up to the sewer line when you're piping for your houses below where the sewer line is. Um, and, uh, they are expensive when they go bad, a- and so there's this, what, what a lot of communities are doing is assessing people who have grinder pumps, uh, a twenty-five dollar additional fee on their utility bill every month. And then that goes into a fund that then pays for whatever repairs come up as long as there isn't, uh, as long as just overt abuse, like flushing down things that shouldn't be flushed down the sewer line is not present. And so it can be, you know, upward of, you know, a couple thousand to three thousand dollars when they, when they go bad. So, so.
There's like one per house?
Yes, well, there, there's discussion as to whether or not some houses may have more than one, but generally, it's usually one, and they're not typically shared between two households or anything of that nature. It's strictly one per household. Um, so. And part of this is back to when we converted over from septic to sewer. This is the households that are below that grade, so. I, I mean, I know, I know how, I do have an opinion on how I, I would fall on this, but, you know.
Well, you have lots of options with this recommendation.
Yes, right there. They, they, yeah, they, they left it up to us. They, they basically wanted us to make this hard, hard, hard decision.
So when we have, um, new homes being installed, is anybody moving the location of their sewer line connection to eliminate the need for grinder pumps?
It could, but probably not.
There are a few that have wanted to, um, but when they look at the actual depth of manhole to where their lines are, there's not enough to actually get it to gravity.
Or so far, anyway.
Right, and that's been on to, at least that I've come across, that they just, they can't.
Right. Well, because I think Melissa commented at a previous meeting that, that there were a number of homes that chose to have a grinder pump that could have not had a grinder pump had they, um, agreed to an, an alternate location for the connection point. So that, that was a choice to have a grinder pump where it was not necessarily the only option. So, I mean, it's, in, in not all cases, is this a, you know, there's no, there's no other way to get it there, we have to have a grinder pump, so.
If, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On, on that score, I'm one of those people. Uh, but, uh, my septic field was in the front, so I've always had a grinder pump. And had the sewer line been put in the back in the, along the dry creek, then, um, I would have had to replumb to my house at that time, as would all my neighbors that are on that line. So there wasn't a, you know, it was, it was a, um, six of one and twelve of another. Because, uh, you know, because of where the septic field was, uh, you couldn't, it wouldn't have been practical to have replumbed the house to move the sewer line to the back.
But there, but there is a sewer line that comes down, um, Pleasant Cove, right?
I don't know where the sewer line is on Pleasant Cove, but the plumbing still is.
Right, but years from now, when you leave and somebody tears down your house and builds a new one, they could, they could put in.
Tie in on Pleasant Cove rather than have.
Right, so they can take advantage of the elevation and they wouldn't need a grinder pump.
If that would be practical or not, because there's, there's also a hill between the property, the elevation of property and the elevation of Pleasant Cove in the backyard as well. I don't know.
Anyway.
Anyway, the, um, because I'm directly affected by this, I'm not gonna vote on it. But I do say that I think it, i- if the council votes to create this fee, we need to have, um, um, an explanation of what the fee covers. That it will cover replacement of grinder pumps. Uh, and then, uh, and I've, I've looked at the Westlake, the Westlake has this policy. Uh, and I believe there's one other surrounding community that has a policy of making a charge. Um, but the other thing is, we have some, I've seen, I went back and looked at the bills from Crossroads just to, you know, they, they are, every month in our council report, we have, get the bills from Crossroads. So I've looked at the invoices that Crossroads, uh, has sent us for these grinder pumps. We do have some sewer connections where there's more than one pump. So I think the fee ought to be adjusted, you know, for, per pump versus, or per pump than per account. Uh, and then the other thing is, um, I, what is happening today is that there's a certain number of, and I don't know how to deal with this, there's a certain number of, there's a replacement pump and there are refurbished pumps, my pump's a refurbished pump, um, that you, that you know that, you know, it's kind of hard to say, well, continue to bill me for a pump if it keeps going out and no one ever take, you know, no one ever buys a new pump so that you don't have the problem. So I think we ought to work on the details a bit of what it is this fee's gonna cover. And if we're making this fee, if we're gonna create the fee, then can we have, you know, good new pumps put in when situation happens? I know I've had, when my, my current, uh, replacement pump was put in, I think it was like the third pump. And I finally found one that worked. That was L, also LCRAs, so not our current Crossroads. Oh, the other thing is, Crossroads has noted that the cost of the pump is about two thousand to three thousand dollars. The cost of the labor from this company called Hydra Source to put it in is twenty-seven hundred dollars. And I don't know if we have a better source that can, uh, reduce that cost or not, but.
I can look into that, I'm not sure. I, last I've heard, it's usually because it involves a lot, they have to bring in a big truck and pump down, you know, and it is dealing with hazardous, you know, waste. So I've, I've heard that that's pretty standard, but we can definitely look into that.
If it is, then no problem, but if it's not.
Sure.
Yeah, I thi- I think if there's a way we could reduce the cost, then this fee could be reduced appropriately if and when that occurs. But my understanding is, this is basically to make sure that you've got a pump that is working. I don't, I don't know whether, uh, a thoroughly refurbished one is significantly less useful than a brand new one. Um, but basically, the city is covering with this fee or without this fee, the fact that you're gonna have a working pump. You know, you're, you're gonna have service because we don't want this not happening.
Nor, nor do I want it.
Right, right.
Have it not happen.
So, so I, I, you know.
Well, that could kind of he- help sell the, you know, we're gonna.
I mean, I mean, you know. I would leave that up to the city's discretion, uh, you know, at a certain point, much in the same way with our police cruisers and all our other equipment, yes, it makes a lot more sense to get a brand new one. But if it doesn't, then I don't want us to, to force us to do that, you know.
Well, but also every time something goes bad on a city cruiser, we don't necessarily buy a new car, sometimes we get it fixed.
Well.
Yeah.
And keep, you know, so it's the same, same thing.
My point is that if we're gonna put this charge in, which will, you know, if it's twenty dollars a month, that's six hundred, uh, dollars. Yeah, six hundred dollars a year that residents will pay, that they know that there's a benefit that, 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 uh, twenty tons.
Two forty.
Twenty forty dollars a year, yeah. Uh, that there's a benefit to be, that's being received for this fund.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think, you know, I don't, my recommendation wouldn't be to do the whole twenty, but rather just to, to start low and kind of ease in into it, but also to have, have some skin in the game too. Um, just so that we have some sort of offset of the cost.
Yeah.
Um, I did have someone from the audience, also before I do that, please let the minutes reflect. Alec Robinson is now on the dais, and Kevin Gleschin is now online remotely.
Tom Farrell, thirty-two, twenty-three Park Hills Drive. Um, the reason we have, uh, these, uh, grinder pumps is I think we had a limitation of twenty feet as we could go down on our lines. And there were that many spots that we could not get there to, to do that, to, and there wasn't enough in a given area to do a lift station that we could, uh, we could put that in there. As I recall, that's what that was. I don't remember what we did exactly with the grinder pumps as we started, but I, I would suggest that, uh, just from a standpoint of, of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, that you look at the, uh, LUE report that we did back in, uh, that day that we, what. that you look at the L U E report that we did back in that day that we, what we could charge for L U Es, and make sure this is not going on as a capital cost for that, because that would impact our L U E fees that we could charge going forward on that potentially. So, and I know that cities now are all charging for grinder pumps. I think that, I, I wasn't aware that, that this was gonna be owned tonight, quite frankly, but I'm not sure that the people that had grinder pumps originally would have known about it if they hadn't done it. So, you might wanna consider giving them a little notice on that, heads up as to what they're doing. But I think this is, it, it is a, I see this happening everywhere, that they're doing this thing, and that's just what we could, I think it's gonna have to happen on that to cover some of the costs. There are companies that do that, the refurbished, unfortunately, I know more about grinder pumps and that than I probably wish I did, but yes, they can be refurbished, and companies, the company we originally had would come, take it out, put in one, refurbish it, and it was a same-day service that you would do. And they, they had them in stock, and they would just keep refurbishing them as it came in. A lot of our problems, I think, that we're seeing now are electrical problems that are coming in. And that's a little different than the pump problem on that, so you have to have a different person. And yes, Ashley's correct, it's the pumping that you have to do to get to the pump, that you have to get to, although we could probably fit some people down in there, but I don't think, think good, I'm not one of them.
I can't help it.
So.
It's a shitty job.
I just, I, I didn't do it the first time, I know, I know. It is, and, and the other, other part about that is, originally, our failures on these grinder pumps were almost always, something was, like a diaper was flushed that, and they're murder on these things that come in. Now, they burn it out, and then they just rewind the copper, is what they end up doing, and cleaning that copper off and redoing it again in there. So, that's how it's done. The pump itself is encased, so it's, impellos that you don't wanna fool with.
Okay, any action, not action? I'm good with whatever you wanna do, council?
I'm, I'm fine to make a motion that we start looking at imposing this fee. I, I agree with Tom Farrell. I, I don't, I don't think we have, have to do it next month or any urgency. I think we need to, you know, have some informing of the community prior to just rolling out a new fee. And, and let them know why this is being done if we do it. And I do think some education about not abusing pumps with things that shouldn't be flushed would be appropriate as well. That was something else that was brought up, is if, if there's, if abuse is shown to, to be occurring, that, then this general fund might not, probably won't cover the replacement of the pump. So, that, that was also expressed a lot. So, it's in your best interest to be kind to the pump. But I do think, you know, educating on both those fronts prior to rolling this out is appropriate. But I, I do think eventually we probably should roll something of this nature out. So, I'll make a motion that we start investigating, educating the community about it, and look at some kind of a timeline for appropriate applying of this fee to the grinder pumps. I don't know about whether or not we need to do it per pump or per household. I think for administrative and billing, it probably doesn't make a great deal of difference either way, probably do it either way, but.
Okay, I've got a, before we, before I ask for a second on that motion, what, what about, I, I think in my mind, we did discuss this a lot in the budget process. We did put a line item in the budget. It's now gone to the utility commission for discussion. A recommendation came there. We did post it for tonight. What, what if your motion were for us to put just a notification in the bills that, that this was going to be considered by the council, and we'll use that as the, as the, as the notice to put people on, on notice to be following the city council, to be able to reach out to you all, or me, or staff.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, we can, we can postpone action on actually, you know, putting, putting the payment forward to see what kind of response we get. Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Do you need a motion for that? Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, with that, we'll move off agenda item number nine, move on to agenda item number ten. Discussion of possible action regarding an official comment submitted for the Mopac South Expansion Project Open House Number Six. I did attend this morning the C T R M A meeting on behalf of Rollingwood, appearing as, as the mayor and testifying at that C T R M A board meeting. Ms. Wayman was there, Ms. Patillo was there. We were joined by the Westlake Chamber of Commerce, Executive Director, their Chamber of Commerce President, I believe, and also by the mayor of Westlake Hills. We all offered public comment on items not on their agenda. I think we were very respectful with our three minutes and with the tone and demeanor in which we approached C T R M A. I will let Ms. Wayman talk to you about, we put together, we wanted to wait for that to occur before we put together sort of a draft letter for our most recent comments to be submitted, I think, by the twenty-ninth. We did provide that to you this afternoon by email and hard copy. We will add that to the, to the packet. Ms. Wayman, you wanna add anything? And then, Ms. Patillo, happy to recognize you if you'd like to give any additional comments.
I can just hit the highlights of the letter, and basically, it's kind of the three main concerns that we've really sort of boiled down to. We talk about a lot more than that in the letter, but basically, regaining access to the Mopac Express lanes that the proposed alternative two C does take away. It makes it very difficult for those originating from BK Road to access the Mopac Express lanes. Noise and light pollution, because this recommendation, this recommended build alternative does include elevated lanes. That's still a concern. They call it the express lanes near Barton Skyway, the elevated ramps near Barton Skyway, but they really are right at BK Road, so it would definitely affect our area. And then also just, we continue to advocate for them to consider east-west traffic. They, they're mainly focused on north-south, those going from Slaughter to Cesar Chavez, and we have asked them to continue to, to bring east-west traffic into the, into the equation. So, that's pretty much the main points of the letter.
Ms. Patillo, do you have anything to add? Or any questions first, council?
I think we have. Did, do you wanna say anything, Gay?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gay, I didn't see you there. Or Tom? Every, everybody. Everybody's welcome to have any comments you.
Tom Farrell, thirty-two, twenty-three Park Hills Drive. Gay and I talked about this, this morning, about, and I think we both agreed, the, the amount of time that's available to us and the community to look at this from the standpoint of when we had our open house here and, and the twenty-ninth of December, I think, is, is too short. And one of the things I would ask that we put on there, our letter is a request to extend our, the comment period for an additional ninety days to get people an opportunity to, to make comments on that. Because I think it was fairly, just where I was sitting, some of the people, the residents in the audience were dropping their jaws when they found out some of the aspects of this, that it was potentially be thirteen lanes wide, and what it would potentially do, not so much to Rollingwood, but to our neighbors, to the self of us on that, for the most part, on that. But I think that would be something that I think we should probably ask, is to extend that period of time. Asking for, you know, comments during the Christmas holiday is kind of a, I know that that's how it's done, but that's still something we should ask for.
We're happy to do that.
Absolutely.
That is why we worked today, to try to get something so that we could meet that deadline. But, but more time is, is always appreciated to double-check our work.
It, one of the other requests that I would ask for on that is BK's Road and Mopac intersection is not included in this project. And, and I'm sure I, there's probably a reason for that, but that would be something that I also would suggest that y'all consider, is adding that. The other thing that I had asked them to do is to include the potential, when they look at the effect of a elevated roadway over to three sixty, what that would do to our traffic on BK's Road and how that might impact that reverse lane proposal that's in the twenty forty-five, twenty forty Campo Report. Because I think that we need to do everything we can to try to get that removed from that report if we could. So, those are the other things. I don't think I had, Gay, do you have any, anything else? So, I, I thought that would be something that Rollingwood could ask for, and that, Westlake, I'm sure would appreciate that too. Because I think that's important, that we get that, anything that helps us get out of that would be better. And BK's Road certainly needs to be included in that project on that. Now, the other thing, there was one other thing, the, if, if you get on Mopac from BK's Road, our ramp that we get on going north right now is gonna be a shorter ramp for us to be able to get over than what it is. So, y'all know what traffic is now, when you're trying to get out of the right-hand turn lane and get over into main traffic of Mopac, well, you'll have a, a lo- a little less time there. And then to get off of Mopac, to get onto BK's Road, that part of it's gonna be reduced by six hundred feet, I think she said. They did a good report, I thought. I thought they did an excellent job of doing that, and I don't, I don't view them as, as evil. I think they're doing their job, but they're text dots, right-hand person on this, so we have to do what they have to do. But I appreciate that they are gonna do some things to, to help Rollingwood, I believe, so. But I, I think these are things we should ask for, whether they do it or not.
And, and we have always included the intersection in our comments previously. It's, it's clear to me that C T R M A is, is punting that to text dot. And they probab- they will likely continue to, to hand that off to text dot, but I have no problem adding it to our comments. It was in our last round of comments as well. We were trying to narrow it down to the things that we thought we might have some reasonable effect on, but I'm, I have no problem putting it in, if that's council's wish, so. Amy did a great job. I gave very high-level comments, and Amy went last this morning, and they got progressively better as we went. And so, by the time we got to Amy, she was very detailed in her comments, and I was glad, very glad I went first.
I was thinking the opposite.
Each to his own. Everyone has a role, right?
I think Mayor Massengill set a really great tone for the leadership delegation that was there representing the West Bank, and reminded me again why he's a thousand times better at this than all, than I ever will be. I really appreciated him being there. I know it's a busy time for everyone involved. A few thoughts I had were, just to, the comment that Tom just made on, if you're, a detail comment. One that Westlake Hills incorporated in their comments, and that we were looking at just early this week, is if you're heading northbound on Mopac from BK Road and entering, you'll actually have to get over two lanes now, because right now you get over one lane in, in order to be in the regular lanes that move forward. But the toll lane will be a lane that comes, one of the additional lanes now that's being added will be the toll lane. And if people who are coming off the toll lane stay in that toll lane, they'll exit Fifth Street. The, the ramp that BK's Road traffic will be entering on will be the Cesar Chavez exit. And it, the configuration when those two lanes reach Fifth Street and Cesar Chavez is different than the way it is right now. And so, in order to continue going north on Mopac, and if you're entering from BK's Road, you'll have to actually get over two lanes.
So, you'll have to cross through the exiting, high-speed tolling.
Tolling, traffic. Traffic, yeah.
That's not good.
So, anyway, there, the additional lanes comment, I think, is worth some more, another look. The, something that I commented on this morning in just looking at this public comment period to the point of, it does feel extremely short, given the time of year and the holidays that exist during this time of year. Also, the fact that many of the local governments that meet, only meet monthly, or maybe twice a month. And so, it is challenging to try to figure out how to get a response done. But I, I also commented this morning specifically on the fact that the schematics that have been released for this particular public comment period, the way that, I mean, we can all see the paper here in person, and I so appreciate Ashley getting those prints. I, I came in the day after I had been to the open house in person and said, I think it would be a really great idea if we could have, in the city, the way we have in the past, have these paper copies. And I know that there's a little bit of expense to the city. It makes a big difference. But even on the paper copies, the way that the actual schematics have been segmented, where they're chunked up, it makes it incredibly difficult to follow the flow of traffic, and confusing. And so, if you're trying to look at that online, it's almost impossible to follow the actual flow of traffic. It takes really seeing the paper printout, and then even getting two of those paper printouts lined out on tables to be able to actually follow it. So, I, I made comment on the fact that I, I think that there's a number of new elements, actually, in, that we're finally seeing for the first time in this proposal, especially the way that the Mopac South project would connect with the existing Mopac North project, that I think are not clear to the public what's actually being proposed. They're not being presented in a way that the average person could come to it and understand how the configurations are being changed. So, that was one of the things I commented on, and I, I do think the comment period needs to be longer, and there needs to be work, more work done on it for the public to be able to know what they're commenting on. The other thing I would suggest, if the city does put out a letter, though, to, at least for in Rollingwood, in, in the past, the council has done different things to let residents know that there's a letter available and ways to comment during the public comment period. One of the times, I remember, we actually sent out volunteers throughout the neighborhood who had clipboards and went door-to-door, and had a petition-type letter that was in support of the letter that Rollingwood was submitting. And so, residents just needed to sign that, but it was a very high volume of people who signed it, and that went along with the letter that Rollingwood submitted. And it was a way to allow people to participate without necessarily needing to dive into every detail of what was being commented on. I've also seen the chamber has put out a template for their members that they can look at the issues and consider using. I wonder if, you know, the, the city could use the, the landing page that now exists that has all the Mopac letters or something similar, that could have information about how to make public comment, and here's the letter. And even something as simple as, as the public commenting to say that they support the letter that the city of Rollingwood is submitting. I think that that's, that's helpful. So, that was my other comment, is I think that in addition to the letter, it may be helpful to decide, how does the public know that, like, the public being Rollingwood, is there, is the city gonna enter into anything that publicizes that information? I really appreciated the city hosting the C T R M A presentation and putting out the messaging so that residents knew that that was gonna be happening. So, I think that if there was a follow-up with a way to comment specifically, that would make sense, and it has been an issue of interest in the community. So, those are my thoughts, and really appreciated just the, the collaboration that's come together from the West. So those are my thoughts, and really appreciated just the, the collaboration that's come together from the West Bank community has been pretty amazing. Also, Donna Howard, Representative Howard, had a, an aide that was there at the meeting this morning. So I think in your list of, of people, uh, who didn't speak but was there and has been, um, becoming educated, so.
And I spoke with her about it last week, and she seemed to be well-educated on it and supportive of our positions.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, those were good comments. I think we can do some of that. Obviously, if, if the timeline is not extended, I mean, we would be somewhat limited on some of those ideas on the, um, getting folks door-to-door and that sort of thing. But I think there are a number of things that we could do, um, and we can look at that next week. Uh, council, happy, I guess, I'm happy to add, um, if, at your direction, I'm happy to add any of those comments that, uh, Tom suggested, as well as, um, some of those that Amy suggested, as well as some of the execution on getting that advertised with maybe some links. We also plan to put the Westlake, um, Westlake Hills letter on our landing site, on our website. And we will also probably do a version of, um, the Chamber of Commerce's, Kathy Hoover put together a great email to her members. I know she's going to put some, she's also going to publicize it on next door to the West Bank community. So we'll also have something related to that on our landing page as well, so that it all stays together and we can kind of help coordinate. Anything else on that? Okay, so I'm happy to take, I would need two things from you, direction on whether or not to add the items that have been discussed tonight. And secondly, authority from you for me to sign a letter on our behalf to submit the comments. We will have to submit. Let me think about this. We might would do two. We, we may first submit a comment requesting an extension of, of the comment period. Because it would be a little odd to request that with
I was wondering about that.
With the comments, right? Um, so I guess a, a double-barrel motion to first give me authority to request an extension of the time. And I do think, especially if we were going to try to do additional public, um, communication to our constituency, that the comment period is open, we would need more time for that. And then the second, um, authority, if that extension is not granted, to go ahead and, and do some limited version of comments between now and the twenty-ninth.
So my only concern with that two-step approach is that asking for an extension, that probably, best case is it goes in tomorrow and probably not going to get anything out of them next week. And then the, the deadline is on a Sunday after the holiday week. So I'm thinking that we're not going to get anything back from them asking for an extension. And so we need to make sure our comments get in.
We will definitely do that.
I have a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
Then ask for an extension of ninety days and say something to the effect that, if this can't be addressed before the deadline for comments, then allow for supplemental comments so that, that parties who do plan to participate, who haven't had enough time to fully address the issues, can supplement their comments.
We can do that. Okay.
And I'm fully in support of asking for additional time. I'm just knowing how most state agencies don't do anything the week of Christmas, except set deadlines for other people to submit stuff during that period of time, um, when they're not around to address them. Makes me somewhat cynical.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Ray, I would move that, um, we, uh, that the council authorize the mayor to file two sets of comments. One, requesting an extension, and if not granted, an opportunity to supplement the comments. And the second, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign a letter taking into consideration the suggestions that were made this evening, at our meeting.
Perfect. You have a motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Ms. Hudson. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Being five ayes, no nays, motion carries. Yes, ma'am.
I would also like to recognize, we have two members of our MOPAC task force here this evening. Tom Farrell, our mayor, and Gay Irwin, a resident who's well-versed in matters of this nature.
Thank you for the recognition, and thank you both for your service and your continued service to the community on this one. All right, with that, we will move off Agenda Item Number Ten and on to Agenda Item Number Eleven. Discussion of Possible Action to Designate December twenty-six, twenty twenty-four as a construction holiday where construction or demolition activities are not permitted. Uh, recognize Mr. McDuffie.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, with the travel that people from out of town do around the holidays, been brought up to me by some of our residents that, uh, it's rather disrupted to have some extensive demolition and construction around that time. So, uh, with that in mind, I think next year we might look at also adding a construction holiday of the day before Thanksgiving. But since that's already passed, I'm proposing that we have the day after Christmas, so December twenty-sixth of this year, as a construction holiday.
Thank you, Mr. McDuffie. Is there, are there questions for Mr. McDuffie?
I don't know. I'll be the person that's like, do we need another construction? We have, with that being, we have the twenty-third, twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and it's like most of the whole week if they couldn't.
Yep.
That's what we're saying, right?
Yep.
I don't know. I'm going to have to think about it.
I, I appreciate the, the thought, and I wouldn't want construction next to me at that time. But I think that it's a little late to change the, change the rules for something next week, especially when they have three days that they can't work next week. And if we add this one, they'd have one day that they could work, and then two days the following week, and then one day that they couldn't, and then, I mean, it
Yeah.
Were you saying for this, this year, or were you saying for next year?
Yeah, I'm saying for this year. Just FYI, the reason the Monday was added is because of Texas Independence Day falling on a weekend. So normally that there wouldn't be three around Christmas. But, but yes, I am proposing for this year to go ahead and add the day after Christmas for this year. And if we don't want to do it, then we don't do it. That is the purpose. That's what I'm proposing.
I'm in favor.
I'm probably not.
Nikki?
We serve at the pleasure of the council.
I just want, I just
Let me help you, Nikki. We serve at the pleasure of the council.
I understand. I just want to know from you, how easy is it going to be to notify all of the contractors in town that they then can't work on, and what kind of response you're going to get from them?
To notify them, I send an email, um, so they would get an email. However, at the beginning of, you know, our budget cycle, they do get one of these calendars. So they do have that available to them, so if
Which doesn't include the day after Christmas.
Doesn't, currently, yes.
Whatever y'all need, I will be able to send
Let's do it next year.
Okay, floor is open, council. I'm happy to have a motion or not.
I, I move that we add December twenty-six, twenty twenty-four as a construction holiday.
You have a motion by Mr. McDuffie. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. McDuffie, a second by Ms. Brown. All those in favor, uh, further discussion?
It's not a staff holiday, correct?
Correct.
It would just be added only to the construction holiday side of the
Right.
Calendar.
How many staff members do we have going to be out on vacation then? I mean, what's the staffing going to be here?
I think we'll have, at, at least fifty percent of our employees will be here. We try to keep where we don't, you know, go down below that, so.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's going to be anybody here that can enforce it if we add this at the last minute, and then
PD will definitely be here, so, yeah.
On that day.
Right, yeah.
So.
Ooh, fun stuffy.
Okay, further discussion, council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Oh, wait, whoa, whoa.
Whoa, what was that?
That was me voting. Can I vote online?
Yes, you may.
I voted aye, in favor.
Okay, uh, opposed, say no.
No.
There being three ayes, two nays, uh, motion carries. Thank you, council. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Twelve. Discussion of Possible Action on Traffic Safety Issues. Um, this is, yes, ma'am.
Can we skip over twelve and thirteen for the moment? Because we have a resident that wants to be here for these, who's supposed to be here probably in the next ten or fifteen minutes.
Yes, ma'am, happy to. We will, um, we will return to Items Twelve and Thirteen in a moment. Uh, moving to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Appointment of members of City Council and, uh, and the mayor to serve as council liaisons for police and courts, utility commission, streets and roadways, park commission, personnel, budget planning, and zoning commission, board of adjustment, and Rollingwood Community Development Corporation. Council, you have my suggested slate to you in your packet. This is, there have been no changes suggested by me. Uh, again, this is your, these are your, um, appointment, or not appointments. These are your selections of your own liaisons from among your body to serve as liaisons to your boards and commissions. I simply try to speed up the process by suggesting a slate to you. So there have been no changes from the, from the previous makeup. Happy to have, uh, a motion if you would be so inclined or make changes.
I move approval of the mayor's proposed council liaisons for twenty twenty-five.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Mr. McDuffie. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Being five ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, council. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Terms of Service Limitations Extension for Board and Commission Members. Uh, this is the, um, annual thing that we do, but I will let Ms. Wayman explain because it's always somewhat confusing.
Yes, there are, we have three folks who have extended or who have reached their, uh, exten, their extension limit for board, their boarding commission service. Um, it is Ellen Wilson, who is an alternate on the Board of Adjustment, Mary Elizabeth Kofor, a regular member of the Park Commission, and Barry Del Camri, regular member of RCDC. And so how we've always handled this in the past is we've had, uh, anybody who would need an extension, we've brought up this item first and allowed council to, to grant those extensions if they wish. Um, and then in the next item, we'll reappoint by slate, um, if the council wishes to do that as well, of all the boarding commission members whose terms are expiring. So this item is strictly, um, extending those terms, term limits for these three folks.
And that is because your term limits exist in the, in the code.
Correct.
But you are allowed to extend them.
So I didn't look at the wording, but I thought we had something in there that said if you are serving a partial term, that that doesn't count towards your six-year limit.
That is correct, yeah. So a couple might be right on the cusp. I think we've always, I don't know if that's what the code says. We've interpreted if it was, you know, just a few months of the, of one term, we wouldn't count it against you. Uh, if they didn't meet their full six, though, it looks like potentially, um, Mary Elizabeth there might be on the bubble and not, not required.
She's just barely over five years now.
Yeah, and not required to.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, if, if, you know, we don't have to take action on that, or we can just go ahead and re, you know, extend the term, the limit.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if that was, if an extension was necessary on that one.
It's looking like it's, we're probably right. I don't think it's necessary on Mary Elizabeth's.
Well, to me, somebody that's been in an alternate position hasn't really served much. So the six-year limit on Board of Adjustment, to me, should apply if you're an active, you know, um,
Yeah, if you've been an alternate for six years and, yeah.
Do what?
If you've been just an alternate for six years and have a really
Yeah, you, you haven't, you haven't really served much, so. I, I have no problem extending the term, so everybody would get a two-year extension.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I move we grant two-year extensions to each of the listed, uh, board and commission members.
You have a motion by Ms. Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Hudson, a second by Mr. McDuffie. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. There being five ayes, no nays, motion carries. Uh, with that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Sixteen. It is like Oz. We are laughing at you, Mr. Machine, but not at you with you, because it does sound like Oz when you just sort of weigh in from the
That's okay. I feel like I'm kind of a wizard, so it's okay.
Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Discussion and Possible Action to Reappoint Board and Commission Members Whose Term Are Expiring For An Additional Two-Year Term. Recognize Ms. Wayman.
Yes, this is the full slate of board and commission members whose terms are ending in December twenty twenty-four. The City Council can, of course, take action to reappoint, uh, you know, an entire slate or, or make any adjustments they'd like to see.
And you have checked with all these people, and they're willing to continue serving?
We have. I think there's might be one that we didn't hear back from, um, and they didn't, it was a board that didn't meet this last month. And so we would, obviously, at any time, somebody can roll off of a board or commission, and we can add a vacancy.
I move reapproval of the, um, appointments of the members whose, um, terms are expiring this month.
You have a motion by Ms. Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Hudson, a second by Mr. Robinson. Further discussion, council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. There being five ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, council.
Better work on my wizard voice here.
It's, it's loud and proud on this end, so.
All right, good.
So we can, we can go back to eleven if you want to, or twelve unless you just want to
Nope, happy to do that. My OCD's kicking in anyway, so we'll go back to Agenda Item Number Twelve. Discussion of Possible Action on Traffic Safety Issues. Recognize Ms. Hudson as it's her agenda item.
Okay, um, when I drafted this item up, I had some, including but not limited to things that the
We decided to open it wide open for you, so.
Yes, that, that the, um, the powers that be decided we just needed to leave it wide open. So I will mention the things that I was thinking that we need to be addressing. And I haven't had a chance to come talk to Crystal, so I'm sure the chief will have some input and, and want to work together on how we can address all of these things. But there are a lot of, um, I don't know, they're not really complimentary, but, but they, they, um, kind of add up all of the issues, and, and I think we need to address them as a whole because they, um, not addressing one item can cause a problem in another area. So the traffic safety issues that I have been hearing a lot about, and there's been a lot on the Rollingwood WhatsApp that some people in the neighborhood are on, um, issues with e-bikes. And, um, the usage of the e-bikes the usage of the e-bikes by kids going to hill country and driving around later, lots of concerns about safety issues, not following the traffic laws, concern that somebody is gonna get hit. And, and we need to make sure that we are addressing the safety concerns, not just for the kids that are on the e-bikes, but I don't wanna be the person that hits one of them. I don't want anybody else to be the person that hits one of them. You know, it's, some of the comments on the WhatsApp is like, oh, they're kids, let them do what they, you know, they're just having fun. And it's, it's fun until somebody gets hurt. And, and nobody wants to be the person that hurts them, and sometimes, you know, when somebody's driving and they swerve to try and avoid some, then there's a, maybe the kid is fine, but there's a car wreck, something else can happen. So we just need to address those concerns and make sure that there is better education. Appreciate the flyer that the police department just sent out. That was great, explaining all of the, you know, what is legal and what's not, and what you have to have for for driving the different types of, you know, e-bikes and motorcycles and various electric scooters and all of that, and the golf carts as well. So I think we need to address those issues so that nobody's getting hurt. The connecting driveways issue, to me, when we have kids riding around on the e-bikes, that's another cut through, so there have been reports on WhatsApp that kids were cutting through parking lots and popping out onto B Caves Road, which is frightening, but the cut-through driveways can, the same thing can happen. You know, kids come up and, you know, they're, they're behind you on the road over here, and all of a sudden they pop in front of you because there's a cut-through driveway. So I think that is a concern that we need to take into account with with the way our roads are being used. Signs. We've had a number of contractors especially putting up signs in the right of way, way bigger than what's our ordinance allows, that is blocking visibility. Some of them stubbornly refusing to take them down when they're notified. That one has a sign up there now still that's not, that's, that's not compliant, but the sign posting, that blocks visibility, which again is a problem with, you know, the kids on the e-bikes. Construction fences, same thing. Because we have some of the, you know, we are now requiring construction fences, and they're not all put ten feet back from the road, and so that blocks visibility. I know that somebody said that, I think Charlie had commented that if they were put up before we passed that rule, that we couldn't make them change. But our current code, or our code at that time, before we required construction fences, had limits on fences, and that's still a fence.
Well, and it's not a zoning issue. I mean, if you change the law, it's not, it, it's not protected like a zoning issue is. I'm not sure where he's coming from on that, but maybe we can get clarification.
Yeah.
You know, if, if you change the speed limit, it's effective immediately.
Right.
You know, if you, if you have other requirements that can be made effective immediately. I don't know why requiring a construction fence if it was put up before a certain date, and I don't recall there being hardly any construction fences when we adopted that. You know, you couldn't require, require it to be moved back consistent with public safety. So, sorry to interrupt.
I'll go back and get clarification from him. When, I know when I, when I re-brought up that conversation to him, he said we would have to go back and kinda re-dig through everything to figure out how we determine that. I don't know if it has to do anything with that it was a building permit that they received under a certain set of rules, and if we changed it, that there were some things we could or couldn't do. But again, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speculate, so.
With the house that they build, that has to do with public safety while they're building the house.
I understand. I'll definitely run that back to Charlie and we'll, we'll get a, get a clarification on that.
Oh, I have also, no, so we do have fencing requirements on how close the fences can be to the street and from, you know, from the street and how close to the street. So fifteen feet on a side, side yard. And we have had several instances where on corner lots, people have now put in essentially a hedge. So it's not really a fence, but it serves the same purpose as a fence, and those are being put in closer than fifteen feet, so that does the same, has the same effect of blocking visibility on a corner as a, as a fence would have, which we, and I don't know, we have to look at the definition of fence to see if a hedge would meet the definition of a fence, or if we need to modify it so that we don't get essentially privacy hedges that are closer to the street than the fifteen feet that our code currently allows. And, and not just parallel to the street, but also perpendicular to the street like at driveways. If you, if you put trees all along, you know, your neighbors or the property line next to your neighbor's driveway, they can't see around them when they're trying to back out too, so I think we need to address that. And then, construction parking. I know that we've had issues where there are multiple houses being constructed or modified in a tight area where there's cars parked on, or, you know, construction vehicles parked on both sides of the street, and so you have one tiny lane to get through there. I know there's been concerns with school buses having difficulty getting through because of the parking on both sides. Concern about emergency response vehicles having trouble getting through there. Somebody mentioned to me that the city of Westlake Hills has a requirement for a parking plan for construction projects, especially when there are multiple projects within a, you know, a close area so that you don't have, you know, massive numbers of cars and, and causing construction, or causing traffic delays. I, I came home from the Lake Austin HEB this afternoon and drove down Ashworth, and there were so many cars next to the one house that's being constructed right there at the end of, what is it, Michelle Circle? Not Michelle Circle, Christie Cove. Yeah, that one, and then down Christie Cove and up there, and I was like, it's right by Jamie Nayar's house, and I texted her, I said, Jamie, are the cars always this bad? And actually, today, they were having a luncheon, so some of the cars were theirs in addition to, or, you know, guests at their house in addition to the construction, so it wasn't just a construction. But that access coming in, it was very tight. I mean, it was definitely a one-lane of traffic, and if extends too far, you can't always see when you get into the chute, if there's somebody else, you know, on the other side of the hill coming into the chute on the, you know, and then there's no way to, no way to dodge them, so. I just think the, the combination of all these things and then kids riding around on the e-bikes mixed in with it, it's, it's just making me very nervous that we're gonna have a very unfortunate incident, and I don't, I don't want that to happen, so. I just want us to consider what we can do, if there's anything that we need to do with the middle school, to talk about training for the kids, some kinda education for the kids that are riding their bikes from Rollingwood to Hill Country. Because, you know, they, they have a vested interest in making sure that their students are getting there safely back and forth each day as well, so. Anyway, there may be other traffic issues we need to throw in the mix, but those are the things that I've been been concerned about.
I appreciate the comments and happy to have any others. Chief, I do have one question for you. I know that we've been, for lack of a better term, pulling over the kids on the bikes and talking to them. It, it seems, I, I'd seen on some of the social media posts, it seems that not all of them are from Rollingwood.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Some are from Austin, some are from Westlake Hills.
Okay. We've still been talking to them and.
Correct. So we have been making contact with, and we have, we're trying all different ways of PSAs. We have actually made a video PSA explaining things, putting it on our social media, also attached it to our PD page on the city site. We have sent out the mailers. We have also sent out a rave today to kinda follow up, to guide everybody to our PSAs, so we're trying. We're trying to like really make contact, and, and we've also made contact with the homeowner that owns the vacant lot that they were using as well, that, and he put a no trespassing sign on his property, so like I said, we're trying to eliminate ways and especially get them to stop, you know, going into the park. I've personally made contact with them as well, and so it's, it also, it's gonna take, we're trying to also educate the parents too on also getting them like what is allowable on the street and what's not, 'cause some of them are like the electric dirt bikes that aren't allowed on any portion of the roadway or pathways or anything like that. So that's what also we're trying to educate parents as well. I do agree that we need to probably talk to Hill Country. We actually do provide every morning, we sit at B Caves, allowing our bicyclists and our walkers to safely cross B Caves Road, where they are every morning, providing that traffic control. And so the only other thing that we can do is talk to Hill Country as far as like, to see if we can have a, a joint effort on trying, but here inside the city, we're trying everything that we possibly can.
And we also, a few years ago, did the rodeo bike, or the bike rodeo.
Yes, we have talked about bringing that bike rodeo back to.
It was not well attended, though, I would point out.
And that is, and so that's the thing, is that this is actually an age that is hard to focus on that will come to your event or anything like that, so that's why we tried, I don't know if you've seen our PSAs, our video PSAs, that's why we try to make it light and kinda funny and lighthearted to kinda grab their attention. And it's only like within a minute and a half to try to like hurry up, push the information out. So if you have any other recommendations, like, we would love to, but we're definitely trying to hit this in all directions. And I feel like we have seen a decrease. I don't know if y'all have felt like that here lately. And so.
We have fines. I know you're talking, there's a fair amount of people that just kinda go, eh, oh, well, I mean, do we have stuff in our code? In our, in our ability to find people, and like, okay, here's your first warning, here's your first line, multiple offenses, that kinda thing, because I see it on my street, and then people are basically, oh, thank you, whatever, we'll just have to do what I want. And then there are twelve-year-olds riding in the class three e-bike down the street, holding masks, and we've got multiple construction vehicles, huge trucks, and you're trying to pull out of the driveway, and they come barreling at you. And I mean, I, I've had that experience, so I just say, you know, I think some people you can talk to respectfully, and some people you can't, and especially maybe some of the people that don't live in our neighborhood, you know, those kids aren't going back, those pants, like, oh, whatever. And you need a deterrent for them to be, A, riding in our neighborhood, and B, doing it multiple times.
Right, and that's another thing that we, so we have stocked all of our patrol vehicles too with our PSA cards. That way, when we are making contact with the parents, that we actually do provide them with an additional card to kinda go over and kinda hit those marks with them, so.
Have the kids that you've talked to, are they, have they been respectful?
The ones I, I talked to are respectful. Unfortunately, we did have a couple of them cuss out at our office, but they didn't live in the.
Write them a ticket.
And so.
I've, I'm real serious about that.
And so, we, we tried to err on the side of just education, right? You know, and just try to get everybody educated and trying to get some parent involvement, like I said, to kind of, you know, self.
Be involved when they pay the ticket.
Right.
Well.
Yeah.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, if the bike is being operated on the road illegally, you know, like the class three bike, can you confiscate that bike and say you're gonna have to have your parent come get this?
We can. We can get them to come and pick it up. And we can actually call them to the scene at that point, and, and then have them take possession of it. It's.
That would be a way to give a ticket to a non-resident parent.
Correct. And so we definitely, yes, we can escalate and do it, you know, go that route as well. Like I said, I feel like we've seen a decrease. But, you know, if, if you're still feeling, or anybody's still feeling like we're not getting cooperation, I mean, yeah, we definitely can.
Yeah, I think use your discretion, I mean, my opinion would be use your discretion. If you, it's kinda like with some of our other types of citations, if you, if it's a repeat offender who you've already talked to and you already have made contact, then, I mean, I'm kind of on a, you know, two, two strikes, you're out, or three strikes, you're out, something like that. If, if someone starts cussing you, write them a ticket on the spot.
And some of them, actually, some of them, we were just making contact with them because they had the wrong, they're on the wrong bike. It's not that they were operating
Right.
in a, not in a safe manner, they were just not on the proper bike. And so it's kinda.
And that's the type, that's where I would use.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
I saw a kid on this, just right at this intersection on a go-kart where you can't see at all, you know, even in the daytime because they're so low to the ground.
Right.
That's, that frightened me again. The e-bikes, at least you see them, you can, sometimes you see them, but the, this go-kart was like a foot off the pavement.
Is there a requirement for lights on bicycles at night? There is. So, because I, there was a pack of boys a week or so ago where some of them had lights on their bikes and some of them not, and it was, to me, past dusk, so it was really hard to see, especially the ones without. They do. They are required to have lights. Okay, 'cause that's a, that's a safety issue, and the problem of boys that age, they think they're bulletproof, you know? They, they don't always think through the consequences, so.
Sure.
When I was growing up, we had to get our bikes registered with the police department. Is that?
Not anymore.
Is that, is that not? Is that not allowed? I mean, something we can look into. I mean, we can definitely look into it, it's not. Now, the other thing is too, is that we're trying to educate is that anybody who's over the fifteen and older can't operate a class three e-bike. And that goes up to twenty-eight miles per hour, and so that's the other thing that we're trying to also make sure it's not happening.
Over fifteen?
Over fifteen.
Under fifteen.
Uh, excuse me, under fifteen cannot operate a, a class three e-bike.
Or, or drive a golf cart.
Or drive a golf cart. They have to have a driver's license. And we've made contact with golf carts as well.
I wonder if you could register golf carts in the city? That way you at least have an idea of who's allowed.
Did I say golf cart? It was a go-kart.
Yeah, you said go-kart.
I said go-kart.
Recognize, Mr. Gleschin, you've got your hand up. Sorry, I missed you there, Mr. Gleschin.
No worries. You know, I, I just wanna give my view on it, that, that of course it is a, a safety issue, but I do think we wanna continue to keep a light touch and be focused more on education and, you know, making contact with the parents is great. I am curious about how many of these bikes you're making contact with, you know? What are the kinds of problems that you're having? Are they, are they on, on bikes that exceed the speed limitations required under the class one, two, and three categories? Are they traffic violations? Are they, you know, driving in the park? What kinda stuff are you seeing, or is it all of the above?
So the, was it we're mainly making contact where, are the actual like pocket bikes and the dirt bikes that are not allowed on the roadway at all? And then we also, I've made contact when they're in the park, riding around in the park, that they're also not allowed to be on park grounds as well, or paths.
Yeah, I've seen the kids in the park and they go in there and tear up the grass, and I guess they think that that's fun, but it's obviously a problem, so I appreciate y'all responding to that appropriately. And then on these pocket bikes, these bikes that are just not street. And then on these pocket bikes, these bikes that are just not street legal, are you letting them drive them off and telling them, hey, these are illegal, but don't do it again? Or what, how are you handling that?
So we are letting them, they're illegal, but we're also making contact with the parents and letting them know as well.
And then you just let them drive them home, or what?
Yes, we let, we do let them drive them home.
Okay. All right. Well, I also just wanna go on the record of opposing registering bikes, so anyway. Uh, those were my comments on the bike issue. Thank you.
The, the comment on the registration was that, my only recollection was that we went in, it was an opportunity for the kids to have to take their bike into the police station and to have a little discussion about bike safety. So it's not, it's not a.
Maybe more just for e-bikes, you know?
Right, well, the ones, especially the ones that are, are most, of most concern from a safety standpoint, but it was just another potential way to get contact with the people that are, you know, that are riding them in the neighborhood.
Uh, because I feel like a majority of the issues that we're having are, are the ones that are operating the, not so much the e-bike, but the non-street legal bikes, which are the pocket bikes and the dirt bikes. And they're kind of, but um, yes, I mean, we definitely do have some e-bike riders too, because theirs do go up to twenty miles per hour, and if they're on a class three, it's going up to twenty eight.
Is it a mixed message if you have a kid on a non-street legal bike that you send home after warning and they get to ride at home and you said you can't ride this bike here? It's not street legal, instead of just saying, sorry, you gotta call your parents, they have to come pick that bike up now? Because if my kid goes out, or my kid was underage and they went out and drove a car illegally, underage, you would have to go pick up that car, because it's, you know, I just, I wonder what kind of mixed message you are giving kids and parents by letting them drive it home once they've been warned? It should be park it, then come pick it up. It's, if it's not street legal to drive, they shouldn't drive it home. That, that would be my, my, my thinking on that, because it's a mixed message you've just sent.
Okay, uh, thank you for the comments, and for the public comments. Thank you, Chief, uh, Council, any other comments, any other motions or any motion?
You have some other traffic concerns?
I do, but I mean, I, I, I have some, I, I thi- I think it's, I'm more comfortable speaking to the Chief offline about some of those.
As far as like the construction fences, I mean, we still do our um bi-weekly inspections, and so that's something that we can definitely look at as well, because there's still, Nikki and Senior Corporal do go out every other Friday to look at construction sites.
Well, you know, if a construction fence is put at the ten-foot distance that they're supposed to be, then they can post their signs on the construction fence and then the sign is compliant as well. So it's, it's, this seems a, an easy way to kind of address. Now, it doesn't mean that the size is gonna be compliant, but at least it, the distance wise, it would, both of those things would be um out of, you know, the line of vision, and that would, it would make it a little easier to, to negotiate.
No, I haven't noticed, so we'll definitely take a double look at that.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Okay, uh, hearing no other comments or motions on Agenda Item Number Twelve, we will move to Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Uh, discussion and possible action on allowable construction and, and installations above and below ground in setbacks, public utility easements and rights of way. Recognizes, uh, recognize Ms. Hudson, uh, for her agenda item.
Okay, we have, we have talked about several pieces of these over the last few months. Um, we were discussing the residential construction in the right of way, which um the proposed ordinance language that we got was not what I was after. It was, it was coming up with a um procedure to allow things in the right of way, and my concern was saying that it should not be, we, we define what cannot be in the right of way. Um, and so that has kind of fallen by the wayside, but we need to bring that up um again. And also just address what, clarify what is allowed in the setbacks and the utility easements as well as the right of way, because we have had um issues with. Catherine's here, because she can, she can explain what has happened in, in her um neighborhood, but we're, we are getting builders that are pushing the limits and things are going all the way to the, into, into the easements. Um, the one next door to Catherine's house, they were installing their um rainwater collection tank, and it was approved to go into the utility easement, which, that is not a good idea. And also um borrowings or, you know, jackhammering to put trees in back close to the power lines, which our current tree ordinance does not allow replacement trees of, um, within twenty feet of a power line to be um one of the protected trees, they're supposed to be on the list of the shorter trees. But they were well within twenty feet from the power line oak trees, but they're not replacement trees, so that didn't, didn't apply to them. But they were new trees, but in the process of all of these holes that they were digging, they exposed the city's water line. I mean, they were jackhammering and the city's water line was just hanging out right there at the back of, at the back of all these holes, um, which is not good for the city water line. It's very close to the power lines, um. We had a change a couple of years ago that allowed detention facilities in the setbacks, and that may be what prompted some of these things to be approved, but it's having um very definite adverse consequences, and I think we need to clean this up and make sure that we are protecting the sanctity of our setbacks and easements and rightaways and not allowing construction, um, construction or installation of, of um permanent, um, not necessarily structures, but permanent installations, other than your driveway or your sidewalk or, you know, things like that, which are easy to take out if necessary to access um city infrastructure or um, and also to protect neighbors who are, and trees that are very close to um property lines on the other side of the, of the construction, so.
Okay, uh, Council, any other comments, and I will open it to public comment, yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a handout related to the issue that Ms. Horn is facing. Um, and I'll just, it, it, I took a look at the code. Um, in twenty twenty, the Council deleted language from Section one oh three two thirty-two, which said that detention facilities, this is in the, the uh drainage manual, detention facility shall be located at a minimum of, uh, located at a minimum ten-foot setback from the property line. The setback requirement shall be measured from the edge of the portion of the facility, such as the top of an embankment or concrete apron rip rap or rock or top of structural wall. So that language that prohibited drainage detention facilities in the setback was removed, deleted uh from Section one oh three two thirty-two. Then, uh, apparently there was no look at the following subsections, which had the kinds of safeguards for uh how, what you can do in terms of excavation and grading with respect to detention facilities. If you look at one oh three two thirty-five, you'll see in subsections five, six, and eight that those protections were drafted in such a way that they apply outside of the ten-foot setback from the property line. Um, and so they don't apply within the setback as written, so there's nothing. You have a protection if you, if you put these facilities uh, uh, outside of the setback, but now if you put them within the setback, you have no protection. There's no protections in the codes as to how, how steep a cut can be, how vertical it can be, and whether it can, whether the soil is loose. So I think we need immediate attention. I don't know that that was what was intended when F was deleted to allow facilities in the setback. I, I, so I, the, the discussion at the time was that there was a moat issue, but I couldn't find anything that really described what the moat issue was. But I also understand that we need, we need protections for the kind of problem that Ms. Horn is experiencing. And we have a code now that encourages these facilities to be put in the setback, because you don't have the same requirements on them as you would were they to be put within the setback line, within the buildable area, so we've got a problem.
Yeah, the, the moat issue was, and, and what was discussed at the time was all above-ground detention facilities. So there was no discussion or, or thought at the time that people would actually put underground detention facilities in the setbacks, so that's a.
Why is it called moat?
Because, because it was, it was blocking, it was, it was requ- people were putting above-ground detention, like a wall or a, or a berm to hold the runoff, detain the runoff. And go, so then it was, because it was not at the property line, you had um.
A moat.
You had a moat, yes.
The, the original DCM prohibited you from putting above-ground detention facilities in the setback.
It prohibited any detention facilities in the setback.
Yeah, what that did.
Hey, Dave, could you use the mic?
Yeah, thanks.
This is how I got into this business. Um, the original DCM Drainage Control Manual had it such that you were not allowed to put uh detention facilities within the setback, which required you to, if, if you had to first have a drainage plan, you would in some cases have to have some sort of detention facilities to meet the drainage plan requirements, but you were not allowed to put the detention facility in the setback, which meant that you had to put it at, at, within the buildable area, which also meant that you might have twenty feet of rear yard setback that couldn't be used, or ten feet of side yard that couldn't be used for detention facilities. But putting a detention facility in front of a wall or your fence in the back would create the moat. And the moat would attract mosquitoes, which is a problem here. And what, when I started addressing City Council about this in two thousand seventeen, I think, um, it was all about my own personal problem and not being able to put uh detention facilities in an area that made sense to me. So, um, anyway, City Council, I thought that we had left it, that we were going to put the defend, require that above ground uh detention facilities could be as close as five feet from the property line to give you adequate space so that you could actually, it would actually be a useful structure.
It, it was a simple striking of the provision that prevented detention facilities in the setback.
And now, yeah, and now that happened in twenty twenty and I wasn't in this business at that point, so I don't know how, how that actually happened, I don't know what that conversation was, but yes, it was taken away.
There were earlier discussions, um, this kind of goes back, so that, what he just described is, is the, what he just described is the detention issue, not necessarily the rainwater collection tank issue. And so, and there's also been discussion in the past of trying to solve the problem of what do you do with this TCEQ required tank? I don't recall a lot of discussion about the underground portion of it, but there, there was some discussion about being able to put it below grade um to try to get that tank, the unsightliness of the tank that is required by TCEQ um out of, out of eyesight, so. But that, but I do acknowledge that there is a, a different problem now that we're aware of.
Well, the, the.
And Mr. Mayor, when, when there's a chance to recognize, may I like to comment on it?
Yes, thank you for, I always forget to look for the hand, Ms. Brown.
Uh, well, I've, I've just described the problem I've identified, so I, I think we need to fix it.
Okay, Mr. Gleschin?
Yes, um, I, you know, we've talked about a lot of different problems tonight about, you know, detention um facilities and, and these rainwater tanks and such, but I think the immediate problem really has to do with excavation. And as I understand the problem, and I, I'd love to hear from Ms. Horn exactly, again, you know, to everybody on the public record what the problem is specifically, because I understand the problem to be mainly the nuisance caused by the noise of jackhammering and excavation immediately adjacent to the property line, and not just noise, but vibration and, you know, some concerns for the, um, even in the integrity of the, of the lateral support of our own lot, you know, where they're cutting, doing excavation immediately adjacent to the property line. But I guess my point is, is that if, if excavations are the problem, we need to address that to the extent we can. You know, we can't really prove it all excavations, because people are gonna be doing basements, they're gonna be doing swimming pools, they're gonna be planting trees and, and such, and they're gonna be jackhammering for that, and, and it's gonna be a nuisance, and I don't know what we can do about that, except, you know, if we had some maybe noise limitation, but I don't know how people can jackhammer quietly. Um, but we could, I think, at least um prohibit excavations that are within a certain distance of the property line. I don't think we wanna prohibit all excavations, but I think we could um have, I thought the five-foot that was mentioned by Dave Bench that was discussed previously might be a, a good rule to say that any excavation has to be within, uh, no closer than five feet to a property line. Um, and then, of course, any excavation, as I understand it, would have to be approved by, uh, as a, you know, permitted activity, which, I understand this particular excavation was approved, I don't know whether it's approved appropriately or not, but um I think if we did have a five-foot rule, that might be a way to immediately address the problem without over-regulating, I mean, we're talking about a whole bunch of different other problems and, and things that might need to be fixed, and, and I think it'd be best to take a narrow approach and focus on this immediate problem and do what it is that we can do to address this problem.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gleschin, any other comments from Council? All right, happy to open the floor to public comment. Uh, Council, I would encourage you to limit your comments on, in relation to any particular um, particular addresses as litigation has been discussed, so. Um, with that, we'll open, open the floor to Ms. Horn.
Hi, I'm Catherine Horn, fifty-eleven Timberline Drive. Um, we, you know, knew we were having a new house being built next door to us. There was a lot of jackhammering, there was a lot of noise. Um, it became pretty extreme to the point that our whole house was vibrating and we were nauseous after days of it. Um, so one evening, we walked over to look at it, along with Tony Stein, one of our neighbors who's on the Planning and Zoning Committee, and so we all went and looked at the hole, and it's in the back left corner. We built our home and we were very aware of the ten-foot utility easement in the back of our lot and that our water lines were back there, and you couldn't do anything in there. This hole was within three feet of the back fence and all the way up to my fence on the left-hand side. That's when we became aware of the code change allowing this. I was always under the understanding that I had ten feet on my property line and at least ten feet on the other property line, that there was a twenty-foot protection between my home and my neighbor's home. When you start jackhammering, and three feet down, it is solid rock for the next fifteen feet, and it is twelve-by-fifteen feet. That takes days, and it is a constant vibration that is damaging to your, your, your home's structure. It may not fully show right now, but it shows over time. We've had two engineers come out, we now have cracked tile in our downstairs bathroom, we have cracked tile in our upstairs bathroom that is on that side of our home. This was fifteen feet diagonally from the southern or northernmost, northeasternmost corner of our, our foundation. So, it was in their back setback, in, in the backside. However, had it been closer to my home, it would have been much more damaging because excavating that large of a portion right there, next to someone's foundation, they teach you in engineering school, they teach you in architectural, they teach all of that, that there are geological ramifications if you jackhammer that much. Our code as it is right now would allow me to put one of those in my right-hand corner that would directly abut to their left-hand corner, and the two neighbors behind me could do that. And in between that, short, small spaces, maybe seven feet, and that's where our water lines are, where they have been then constantly disrupted. And that is our city's infrastructure that we are damaging, that our city is allowing to be damaged, not necessarily just my home. So, I asked council to look at this and look at, are these stormwater retention systems even worth it? Are they, do they do the job that they are planning to do? Because they put that in, and then last week, they started jackhammering all down the side, three feet from the property line, for the pipe all the way down to the street. So, it, it was constant. I mean, my husband and I were sitting there. You could be in an interior bathroom in my home, you could be in my office, and all you felt was the shaking. That is not normal, nor is it good. And maybe twenty feet isn't going to one hundred percent protect you, but it is a better protection than ten feet because I've protected myself on my lot, and what the city is allowing others to do, because these are builders. This one builder that is doing this house next to me has done this on two other lots down Timberline. They're all in the setbacks. One is a corner lot, so yes, it doesn't abut to a neighbor, but it abuts to a city street. How does that impact our city street where it is in the side setbacks? What that allows these builders to do is, yes, maximize their building potential within their buildable zone. You can still, I, I have a forty-five-hundred-square-foot house that actually easily could be seventy-five-hundred square feet because we don't have a full two-story, and we don't have everything covering it. And I could still have one of those and a pool within my buildable area without the need to go into my side setbacks. We've got to stop just protecting the one lot. We have to protect all lots that are abutting. We also have to protect our utility easements. The fact that they were jackhammering into the utility easement within five feet of the fence to put large trees, that is, they quote said, "Well, City of Austin Energy told us we could do it," which is code for, yes, I asked City of Austin Energy, who says in their rules, "No, you can't put these trees there." But then if you ask, they say, "Okay, we can put it there, but we reserve the right to cut them." We reserve the right to cut those limbs when they grow too big and get close to our power lines. Well, guess what? The builder who's putting that in, it looks great when he's selling it right now in the first two years. So, in five or six years, when those trees grow, or in ten years, it's passed on to the homeowner. And it's sort of the "not my problem in the future" issue. And is that the type of city we are to allow things where, okay, it looks good now, but, oh, sorry later on? And we aren't. So, we have to protect our power lines, we have to protect our water lines. Literally, two days after the jackhammering fiasco was discovered, the next-door neighbor to me, his, his front sewer line went out, they had water backing up because they had tree li- tree roots that had gotten into the water system there. And these trees were ten feet away, they weren't right next to it. So, and they were older trees, but it happens, it gets there. So, if we don't protect our easements, if we don't protect our water lines, which, as we all know, it is very costly to manage our water system, why we are allowing Austin Energy to say, "Sure, go ahead and put it there," when it's the city of Rollingwood? This is, this is our city, these are our issues, this is our infrastructure. So, we have a multitude of issues of what we're allowing to go in the setbacks, on the easements, and what we're allowing to go on the setbacks next to homeowners. Do you get over the jackhammering and all that kind of stuff? Yes, I know somebody's gonna put in a pool. The days they were jackhammering from the pool, you felt it, but you did not feel it at the level that you felt it when it was right up next to my house. I really appreciate, you know, Brooke Brown, Phil McDuffie, Sarah Hudson, they came over to feel it. Dave Bench, they came over to feel it, and when you sat in my house, in the middle of my house, not on the edge, you felt the whole thing. You could put your hand on a table, you could put your feet down, you felt nauseous. And just imagine four weeks of that. I get we have to live through construction, but what I don't think is right for City of Rollingwood residents is to force residents to have their properties damaged by someone who is building next door to them. And jackhammering down fifteen feet, twelve-by-fifteen feet deep is damaging to all structures around. The neighbor's pool, the whole time, she could see it like this. And so, that little code change, since that code change, if you look at the houses that have been built, a majority of them have used this. Two of the council members, one, actually, one of the council members who voted for this, one of his investment lots has this now in the side setbacks. I ask you to really protect our side setbacks because it protects every homeowner. It's not just the one who feels like it's annoying. It's not that it's annoying, it's that it's damaging, allowing someone to jackhammer that low. The other thing is, you need a jackhammering permit. Like, if somebody's gonna be excavating, there needs to be an excavation permit where people, it's, you know, lined out, it has to be approved beforehand and approved after. Had that happened, we might have caught that they were drilling into our ten-foot easement beforehand, before it started, because once it started, that builder looked at me and said, "Sue me." So, the city created an issue, and the city engineer created an issue by approving it incorrectly. So, we need some sort of permit, because if you don't even go check after the fact, you know, "Oops, sorry, my bad," that seems to be what goes on in Rollingwood, and the builders know it. They know that it's an "oops, my bad, now you, we let you do it because they're gonna threaten to sue us." So, I ask you to really look at these setbacks. I think there should be a moratorium on any excavation in them for these, these tanks, and looking at what goes there. Do these tanks even work? I mean, in five years, if you have to replace it, and they've put trees in the setback, and I've got stuff in, you know, I don't have anything, where are they gonna go to get back there? How are they gonna get back there? If the city had to trench back there, how does the city do that, too? So, I, I, I think you have a lot of issues you have to look at, but I think simply protecting our side setbacks is one of the beauties of Rollingwood. We don't have impervious coverage, and I'm not going there. I don't think we need impervious coverage if we say, "Build what you can within your buildable zone. Here are our setbacks, nothing goes in them structurally." And that means an underground structure or above-ground structure, minus like a little playground that you can move. But something that you cannot move is a permanent structure. So, I invite you, I'm gonna send to Ashley all of the videos of everything we have, I'm gonna send all of the photos, and really look at them and listen. I mean, you can hear my windows vibrating. I'm, I stand in my bathroom that is on that side of the house, in the bathtub, as they are jackhammering simply just a short distance down to do the pipe that runs to the street, and you feel my bathroom vibrating because it is that close to my house. So, the ten feet protects me, and it protects them. So, I, you know, I, I really, I hope you will look at this on a lot of levels of, we need excavation permits, it needs to be for the, all those areas. Just, you know, go out, see, okay, we see where you're doing this. But it shouldn't be that my, you know, this happens, it shouldn't be that our water lines show up when they're putting a tree there, and we tell the neighbor, "Well, I know it's already peeking over, just cut the limbs." No, Austin Energy's not in charge of our stuff, we are. So, that's my feeling. Anyway, but I'll send all the stuff so you have it, and please look at it, and thank you to those of you who have looked at it and who did come out and who did feel it and get it. And, you know, it just, I know I looked like the crazy lady screaming, but it was, it was pretty rough at the Horn House at the end of every day.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
I would, one comment before we move on. When I went over there, when the, um, I went over multiple times, but the last time was when they were jackhammering the, the line for the pipe, and I was probably there for thirty minutes or so in all parts of the house, not just right next to it. The bathroom door, when I grabbed that, I mean, that, the knob was shaking, and I started feeling queasy after being there for thirty minutes. I felt weird for an hour and a half after I left. So, I can't even imagine having to put up with that for days on end. This is, this is, is a definite issue for the people that are living around it.
Mr. Farrell.
Tom Farrell, thirty-two, twenty-three Park Hills Drive. I certainly feel for what you had to go through on that. We've had a lot of jackhammering around our house, too. We had three houses go in with jackhammers at one time. Two of them were in, one of them was in Austin, one of them was in Westlake, and one was next door. So, I know what you mean on that. Two comments I'll make. One, the setbacks, I couldn't agree more. They need to be kept as setbacks and clean. And I, I still don't understand that we're using, uh, even when this, uh, four years ago, when this was approved, I envisioned then it was going to be above ground, it was gonna be a, more of a, of a, of a type of, uh, of a berm or something that was holding in the water, not the underground tanks. I, I'm still having a hard time understanding that that underground tank is not a structure according to our code because we are putting a structure in that setback. And I don't care whether it's underground or above ground, it is still a structure there. And I would, maybe we're just not reading that the same way I read it, but I, it looks like to me that that is, shouldn't be allowed to go in there. Certainly, nothing within our PUEs should be allowed on that. And we do have a ordinance on trees that go under power lines, and that doesn't have anything to do with Austin Energy. That is, uh, Rollingwood, or maybe we just proposed that, Dave. I know we just worked on that.
No, it's, it's, it's for replacement trees, um, doesn't include trees that are not replacement trees.
Then, then this, these were just done as a screen. So, I think we could easily expand that to say, "Okay, it's, it's all trees, it doesn't matter wherever you put them, whether you're gonna do a replacement or not." But I think that, uh, these are fairly easy, uh, things to take care of. I've, I've not been a fan of underground tanks for a lot of reasons. One is the construction that goes on with them. Two is, there is no way in the world we're gonna be knowing these things work in a couple of years. And, uh, there's no testing facility that we're doing. We, we don't have an ordinance that, or TCEQ doesn't have a ability to come test them. So, they do get stopped up, and they're not gonna work. So, we have to, if we're, if they're above ground, we know they're working. If they're below ground, they're out of sight, and nobody's gonna ever see them again on that. So, I would, uh, I would consider, ask you to consider two things. One, make sure that these are classified as structures to keep them out of our setbacks on that. Number two, consider not allowing underground tanks as a means to do this. And then the third thing that I would ask to, to do is, I have been, um, I, I've, I've heard all these numbers that these people that are building homes are telling me that they're spending a hundred thousand dollars on our Drainage Criteria Manual. My, my guess is that a good part of that is the TCEQ, uh, portion of that. But still, it's a lot of money, and I'd like to make sure that, uh, that we are getting the best bang we can as a city out of our Drainage Criteria Manual. I know I followed Sarah's lead on drainage forever, and I will again because I think she keeps up with it better than anybody else I know. So, I, but I do think that it would be, it would be, uh, wise for the city to say, "Okay, let's check and make sure that these, that Drainage Criteria Manual is doing what we think it should do for the amount of money that these people are spending." And maybe there's an alternative, uh, that we do some of the drainage air, some feeds. We may have to modify it a little bit, or it may be working, and I hope it is. And I think it is, but I wanna make sure it is, uh, for the amount of money that people are spending on that. We can't control, of course, what TCEQ requires on that, and shouldn't. But we can require, we do control where they put it on the lot and keep it out of the PUEs, keep it out of the, uh, out of the setbacks on that. I, I will tell you, the excavation permits, there's, uh, the, the rocks, the, the level of rocks on Park Hills Drive where I am is a continuous layer of rock. And if you hit one end, you get it on the other. You get two houses down, as a matter of fact, uh, to catch that. So, I do understand that that is a, a problem. When they come close to our water lines, I can assure you that our water lines, the biggest cause of water breaks we have is we are on the escarpment. And believe it or not, rocks move here, and they rush up against the, uh, water line, and they'll rub with the pressure of the water line, because water line pressure's up and pressure's down, it moves, and it rubs and it breaks a hole in it. And that's just gonna cost each of us money, uh, to have those repaired on that. So, and, and if we have to get around this tank, we're gonna damage those, and, uh, even when we have to go through an above-ground detention system, if it's in the PUE, we're gonna have to redo it, and that's gonna require our homeowner to come back and redo it in the way that it was done in the first place on that, which, getting people to come back, um, just, just from experience of putting the sewer lines in, and I had to go around where, you know, the dog's grave was, so I didn't go through that and the, you know, the, the magic places that we had to go around. It's just something that is a very difficult thing to do and causes a lot of problems. Keep them out of the PUE, keep everything out of the setbacks. And I do appreciate everybody's effort on that, and I know y'all are tired.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you.
Mr. Gashin, you recognized?
Yes, thank you. So, we got a couple of different issues there. One is the excavations in the setbacks, and the other one's excavations in utility easements. You know, generally, you have the right to use property that is burdened by a utility easement, but the utility easement has the superior right, and you can't do anything that would damage or interfere with the utility easement. You're allowed to do something in there, though, unless it's otherwise prohibited. So, but I wouldn't have any problem prohibiting, um, excavations in the utility easement because those utilities are generally underground, and if you do any excavation and put a structure in a utility easement, as, as several people have pointed out, that could be very problematic then for, you know, the installation of, of utilities or repair of utilities. So, I wouldn't have any problem prohibiting, um, putting underground, installing anything underground. But, you know, maybe the question is sprinkler systems, excepted for your yard sprinkler system. I don't know, but that, when we talk about setbacks, it's a whole nother issue. Do we allow any excavations in setbacks now? Are people allowed to put a pool in their backyard now? Or does it have to stay inside the end, building envelope, or can it go in the, in the rear setback? How close can it be to the property line? I was just not, not, um, remembering what the rule is on that. If somebody knows it off the top of their head, that would be helpful to me.
Pool, pools have to be within the buildable area.
That's correct. The, uh, the exterior of the pool, uh, is allowed to be in the setback, but the pool itself has to stop the setback.
So, we do allow, like, the decking around the pool, but no excavations in the setback are allowed for swimming pools, right?
That's correct.
What about grinder tanks? Those, uh, sewage grinder tanks, are those allowed in the setbacks?
I don't know.
That'd be part of the...
I don't know. Sounds like it's part of an easement.
This is what we're trying to get clarified.
Yeah, but we, we don't actually have dedicated easements for those grinder pumps. That's something that came up before.
They're in the yard.
I'm sorry?
They're, uh, in my experience, they're in the yard between wherever your plumbing exit, exits your house and where your, um, um, septic system used to be.
And, and you're saying yard, which is the same thing and is, we're actually, the proper term is yard in the code, but we're all calling them setbacks, right?
I'm saying that they're in, they're in the unoccupied space between where your septic tank used to be and your house.
Well, I never had a septic tank, but I've got a grinder pump. I built that house and I had to put a grinder pump in it in, you know, ten years ago when I built it. And, and I think it is in what would, under the code, be called the side yard. I don't know if it's ten, ten or fifteen feet from the side lot, line, but that, that's my question is, do we allow any excavations in the yards now, which we're also calling setbacks? So, that's, uh, ten or fifteen feet on the sides. It's twenty in the back and thirty in the front, right? And I can't hear unless you're at the mic. I'm sorry.
What you said, uh, councilman is, is true. It's, uh, ten or...
That, I, I think the way the code is drafted, unless there's a prohibition on excavation, we are not precluding an excavation. And so, the issue is, does our code adequately prohibit excavations in setbacks and easements?
I don't think it does, and, and that's why I was asking, but if we do prohibit it, are we meaning to prohibit everything? That's why I brought up grinder, um, tanks, for example. I assume we don't want those in the setbacks or the side yards or, you know, or even the front of the backyard. I don't know. I'm just raising it for discussion, because if we start saying, you can't put anything in your yard underground, that's a pretty broad statement. Of course, it would prohibit technically, if you just passed it like that, it would prohibit a sprinkler system. So, you know, we gotta be careful what we say, um, because, you know, people also run other underground utilities of their own through their own yards, um, water lines, sewer lines, whatever, and those gas lines. And, you know, we gotta be careful to not prohibit that if we prohibit excavation in the, uh, yards. I, I do think it's an, an important point that, and first of all, I do wanna also go back and say, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Horn's gone through, had to go through this. It sounds just awful, like you're almost driven out of your own home. And I'm, I'm sorry that's happened. It shouldn't happen. Um, and, and I do, and I do think that it's, you, you raised an important point that prohibiting excavations in the yards, you know, is a very worthy discussion point, and I'm in favor of prohibiting, uh, excavations. I just think we have to do it carefully and, you know, define what it is we're prohibiting and think about, you know, what do we have in, in yards now? And what would the impact, you know, what sort of activities are we gonna prohibit? Anyway, that was my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Gashin. I recognize you, Mr. Bench.
Okay, um, just really quickly, uh, I echo a, a number of, uh, Mr. Gashin's comments, but I want to, I've visited the site several times and I've had a number of conversations with Ms. Horn on this. And I want to emphasize that I don't believe that there are several simple postage stamp solutions to this issue. Because I think everything that you do affects something else. And it, the comprehensive aspect of it is that it's complicated. And if you did one thing, you're gonna, you're gonna affect something else over here that you didn't want to affect. This requires, I believe, this requires a lot of study and a lot of attention to what's, what our codes are right now and what the possibilities are. Um, and I urge City Council not to move quickly on any of this. That's my two cents. There's, there's more to do here than what we can talk about this evening, I promise.
Thank you, Mr. Bench. Um, I, I will just make one point to, um, to answer the broader question of, do we think that the tanks work or not? I, I personally don't think that they work, to answer that in, in a broad sense. The, the, the tanks are water collection tanks and they're about water quality, not about water quantity. So, they're not about what, like what Mr. Bench was talking about earlier, related to the detention facilities. The tanks themselves are a TCEQ requirement. Um, and I personally believe, and if you drive around Westlake Hills, drive, go to Lost Creek, I, I, in my opinion, we seem to be the only ones enforcing this TCEQ requirement. Um, and I think that the TCEQ requirement is, was really initially designed to be about commercial water quality. I think it was designed to try to, the whole point of those tanks is to catch what they call the first flush. So, when it rains, those tanks are designed to catch the first flush off of, off of the drainage off of your rooftop to stop illicit discharge into the aquifer. I personally do not believe that there's a lot of illicit discharge off of your roof. I, I do think that there's illicit discharge off of a parking lot. I do think there's illicit discharge off of a commercial building. And I believe that that's what those rules are in place for at TCEQ. Unfortunately, we've never been able to make any progress with TCEQ to give us clarity and/or an exemption. It's a black hole. Um, I have attempted it in the past. Um, and I'm not, not saying that we shouldn't try to have that discussion with them again. I, I don't think they care much about it. Um, but when you ask them for an exemption, they all of a sudden care. Um, but I think that's why no cities around us bother to enforce it. Um, but we're diligent here, so, um, that's my two cents on the tanks.
Ms. Mayor, can I just ask about that? What is it that makes you think, uh, Westlake, um,
I, I, that's anecd- that's anecdotal. It's because when I drive around, I don't see big ugly tanks to the size of all of their houses.
There's also a, a imperious cover criteria that triggers that, and Westlake has bigger lots, and so...
It may, there may be some nuance there.
They may be under the...
Yeah.
I might say within the...
We, we are in the...
I see requirement.
We are in the Barton Creek, Edward House, the conservation district. And it stops just on the other side of our city limits.
Wow, okay.
Yes. That's what, wow. But I, I've logged, I try to, you know.
Well, good. I'm glad to know I'm not the only one that...
And, Mr. Mayor, may I comment on that?
Yes, sir.
Um, I was gonna, my comment is, is that I, you know, agree with your assessment that the, you know, things are at least, uh, perplexing to me as to, you know, what the purpose of them is and what they, how well they function. And I, I think I learned more, you know, from your explanation about the first flush as a kind of pollution catch issue, um, as opposed to actually providing any meaningful detention. And I've noticed several people, or at least Ms. Horn commented, how many of those things work? And, and I agree, there are probably, you know, very few of them are maintained and functional. I, I'd, I'd be happy to have us as a city, you know, figure out a little bit more specifically what, where that requirement comes from, you know, at least identify those code sections, do a little research or, or regulations and little research to find out, is it really required? Because, and then also to your point, as a practical matter, is it something that's being enforced anywhere? Because if we didn't have to require those and if they don't, you know, I would be in favor of getting rid of some of that requirement. Um, even, um, you know, we heard a comment about people talking about spending a hundred thousand dollars to comply with drainage. I think to the extent that we're building unnecessary tanks and particularly where we're excavating rock to install them, um, that just, it seems, they do seem pointless to me, but...
I, I'm happy to work with you on that and I do think it's worthy of us looking at, at that root cause of it, too. If it was that important, they would show up and ask about it occasionally and they don't, so. Um, okay, any other comment? And I'm happy to take any motions. I don't know that there's a motion to be had, but I, you know, obviously I think that there's an appetite here to look at this, um, further. And we're stand ready to do that in whatever way the council would like to proceed.
Well, I agree with Tom Farrell's comment that whether it's above ground or below ground, it's a structure. And structures should not be allowed in the utility easement or, or the setback. And so, I, I thi- I think, you know, it's appropriate to consider putting a moratorium on it until we can do more research, perhaps even save some of our builders some of this expense if we finally determine that this is a worthless endeavor and, and not required at all.
You'd have to change state law.
Well, we, we don't know that yet.
I do think about that. I think, I've thought about that every two years, too, and I've never gotten around to drafting that bill.
We, it, we don't, we don't require, it's not a city regulation
Yeah.
that says you've gotta have a tank or it's gotta be this big.
Right.
That's TCEQ. We just say where they can or can't be located.
That's correct.
So, it's...
Well, I, we will...
We can, as long as the TCEQ requirements are in effect, we need to...
Right.
We'll try to get to the, we'll try to...
The consequences.
Yeah. There's a file around here somewhere with some of this research. I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see where the TCEQ requires them and what they do to enforce it. And then, are we enforcing it? For example, is a condition of a building permit requiring them to show the TCEQ-required tanks? I don't know. I'd be curious about all that.
Yeah, we do require that.
Well, I'd like, I'd be curious to see whether we could not require it. But I do agree with, uh, Councilman Duffy's suggestion that we prohibit the installation of these tanks and easements and setbacks. And I think we could make a motion, uh, to do that, um, now and prohibit any excavation. I think in the, in the setbacks or easements, say deeper than eighteen inches, which would be like a normal utility line thing. I, I guess a tree excavation might be more than eighteen inches. Uh, maybe we could say except for trees. And, and I agree, you know, I mean, I brought up some concerns about the broad prohibition of excavations and how that's gonna be complicated and require some thought. And, um, um, I think that, uh, you know, Councilman Duffy's suggestion of a moratorium might be a way to kind of see what comes up and that people want to do. You know, but a moratorium would prohibit planting a tree technically if we said no excavation. We could limit the prohibition to just these tanks for now, and since they're the immediate problem, maybe that's a way to approach it. I don't know.
That was more of what I was suggesting. I'm not suggesting a broad moratorium against any excavation whatsoever. Uh, I, I was getting back to Mayor Farrell's point that a tank is a structure and, and, and we already should be prohibiting structures in the setback and in the public utility easement. And so, that, that I think is appropriate to consider doing something in the interim while we do further research on, you know, what boundaries we want to put in place permanently.
Like, we could look at the definition of structure on the prohibition now and just add, uh, including underground tanks, perhaps.
Well, I, the concept, I, I agree with the concept. The problem arose because we deleted the prohibition on structures in the setback, and that's pretty easy to fix.
Agreed.
Well, that, you, you, when you say we, we deleted the prohibition on structures in the setbacks, you meant just with regard to the, um, the drainage plants, right?
Correct. Correct. And, and, and there's, um, I think we can come up with by next, by the next council meeting, either language for a moratorium that's directed to those structures in setbacks and, um, uh, utility easements and then fine-tune it as we understand what the code does and doesn't allow with respect to other types of excavation.
I think, I liked your idea of initially, uh, Councilmember Brown, where you suggested that, you know, we go, just go back and, and just fix that by putting the, the prohibition back in the, in the code that prohibits the drainage, um, structures from being put in the setbacks.
Drainage structure and a collection structure are two different things, because you're gonna get back into the moat.
Okay, okay.
And that's the...
Okay, I can see what you mean, right? The burns and such, but...
Sarah, can you turn on your mic?
Okay, sorry. Um, what was deleted talks about detention facilities, but what was installed here is a, is a
Collection.
containment or collection facility, so it's not...
It is, it's nuanced, but it is different.
Right. So, that, it's not the same thing, not the same purpose, not the same, um...
Correct.
requirement. That's not a DCM requirement.
Correct.
It is a TCEQ requirement, what was installed there. Um, I think we need to clarify whether or not our PUE restrictions already prohibit installation of something like this in our utility easement. I mean, can we clarify that? Because maybe our code already prohibits that and we just have not been enforcing it? Or it was skipped? I don't know if that's something that the city engineer, it seems like it's something that they should have caught, but maybe we need to clarify that our code does or does not already prohibit that. It certainly should.
Can look at that.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, I, I'd like, I, I think Councilmember Brown, who's, seems to be our designated code writer and is very good at code, could, could study those, those code issues and have some suggestions for us at the next meeting that would address it. Because I think we have a good consensus that we wanna prohibit this sort of, uh, jackhammering and installing underground, um, structures in both the, uh, yards and utility easements. And how exactly we go about doing that is a, is a code drafting issue. So, I think, I bet we could get some proposed code by the next meeting. And of course, our council could help if necessary as well. Is that something you'd be willing to work on, Councilmember Brown?
I would be glad to do that.
I don't wanna nominate you for a job that make, make work for you.
I'd be glad to do that, and I would be happy to also work with Nikki and ask our code people what prevented them from enforcing it in this instance, so we have the benefit of their history on this issue.
I, I think if you're trying to fix that problem, you need to know that, the answer to that question.
Exactly, exactly. And there are, um, this part of the code does use the word, what was deleted uses the word detention, but there's about four definitions of different kinds of drainage facilities in the drainage manual. I had that in an earlier draft of my memo, but I didn't bring it on this one and I can't remember
And I think that's...
exactly how broad detention is based on how it's defined in our code.
There may be a definitional issue here, too, to, to try to avoid the moat situation. Yeah.
Okay, do we have direction? Are you clear?
I think, I think so.
Okay.
We have some ideas.
Good.
I'm happy to work with you on that, too, Brock.
Okay.
Yes.
Try and get this...
And I've seen what you did the la- when this was offered, when this amendment was offered, you had alternative language then.
Okay. All right, we will work with you, uh, to try to get some language for the next council meeting. Um, in anticipation of using a scalpel and not a hammer, so...
Always.
Okay, great. With that, we will move off of Agenda Item Number Thirteen and move on to Agenda Item Number Seventeen. Uh, discussion and possible action on a resolution in the City of Rollingwood to join, uh, with the State of Texas and political subdivisions of the state as a party in the Texas opioid settlement agreement secured by the Office of the Attorney General. This is a very similar item, uh, that has come before you before, Council. is a very similar item that has come before you before, Council. It is not the same item, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley to tell you why it's not the same item.
Yes, they, they release these kind of separate settlements depending on the company, so this one is with Kroger Corporation. The previous resolutions that the City Council has adopted were for other, I think CBS was one, Allergan, there's been a few that we've joined on. And so, because we've already done a lot of that paperwork and signed on to those other settlements, we only need to do just this, this small three-page form here at the back of this resolution. And so, we would need the City Council to approve this resolution, basically authorizing the mayor to, to sign on to the settlement.
Move approval.
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, and a second by Ms. Hudson. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Is that five ayes? Did you vote, Mr. Gashin?
I did. I was trying to be quiet.
Oh, no, you're good. I just...
You are super quiet.
I thought maybe we, I thought maybe we found the plaintiff's attorney all of a sudden, and you had to recuse yourself. No, no luck? Okay. Five ayes, no nays, motion carries. Okay, with that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 18. Discussion, possible action on a proposal by K-Freeze and Associates to prepare and submit the city's application for water rights to the Lower Colorado River Authority. We have been making some level of progress on this previously approved item. I'm sad and sorry to submit to you that what we thought the upper limit, the last time we brought this to you at 40,000, did not quite get there in terms of the final estimated cost. And Ms. Wayman, do you want to add anything to that?
No, other than we did talk to KFA, they were the ones that had given us that $40,000 guess of how much it would cost, and they, they said that upon further review of the application requirements and the information we already had available, it was going to cost more to get this application put together. So, the request is for approval of this proposal, which is for $50,525, and that would be, that would include the entire application to LCRRA for the water rights.
So, this is not construction, but it's over $50,000, do we have to have bids?
Question?
Okay, so that doesn't...
We're sort of down the road on this. I don't see an option. I think we kind of have to do this. I'll express to you, I'm not all that pleased that we're out of, well out of what the original estimate was. I say well out of 10,000 over what the original estimate was, but I also don't see an option, a better option at this time.
Well, $25,000 of that is surveying. Do we not already have a boundary survey?
Actually, I think they found some efficiencies there.
They did there. I think there's, I think there are just a lot of requirements as far as surveying. I don't believe that we have a full boundary survey that is updated. I think we have previous iterations that they have, and they're hoping to use those, but there is still gonna need to be some pretty extensive surveying done, according to them.
That's all subcontractor, so that's not even K-Freeze. Did they get multiple bids before they...
I'm not sure about that.
And that just seems really...
So, again, this falls under the Government Code Professional Procurement Act, and it's typical with these types of services, with engineering, surveying, architectural design, all those have been carved out under the Professional Procurement Act to have change orders, and, you know, it is up to that primary engineering firm to do their own procurement under the Professional Procurement Act. So, there's no bidding, per se.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm just saying that that's half the cost of this contract is surveying by somebody else. And I'm just wondering if we can ask them if they have, if they considered any other serving subcontractors
We...
before we, before we approve this.
Well, it's an up to, it's not to exceed, and we, we can absolutely still do that. You can still prove it up for the not to exceed, and we can, in fact, I will gladly push that pressure point, to try to drive that cost back down.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the, some of the requirements on this. Not sure what the boundary survey does for a water rights application.
I know it is, I know it is a part of the application. We looked at one that another jurisdiction did recently, and it was, I mean, I think it was like hundreds of pages.
Yeah, and I will say, I'll argue the other, in some fairness to KFA, they did, they have gone into more due diligence with LCRRA to ask them more specifics about what is required and what is needed in the application process. So, I do think some of this is based on some of the clarity that they got back from LCRRA and some of that.
Have they done these?
I believe so.
Yeah, they've, they've said that they've got experience doing this.
They, they did know the questions to ask.
True.
And, and LCRRA has been helpful, too, in their communication.
It just seemed there was a whole lot on the, here that it's like, these are all the things that we assume that you've already done, and we don't have to... Like, KFA assumes that the city has all of the data needed to complete the necessary forms for the application that is readily available. Like, we already have all the information.
Yeah, let's just submit the application.
Why is it so much, so costly?
And we'll gladly go over some of these details with KFA, if you do approve this. I will tell you right now, I do not know how to submit this application, so I'm gonna need, we're going to need some help. I will pressure them all when we can, but I do, I don't know how to do this, so.
What did, did we, like, I don't, I kind of remember us talking about this before, but did we budget for this?
Yeah, we're, we're pulling it out of our unexpended balance for water and wastewater.
Well, I, I have a suggestion, if I could.
Yes.
Raise my, raise my hand there.
You're good.
You know, if K-Freeze says they've got experience doing this, but I don't, I'm always skeptical of that sort of thing. I'd be curious to hear from the LCRRA, who, who, who's, who really does have experience doing these, who does these things efficiently, or who does, you know, identify some of the, the firms who are doing this work, you know, maybe with a casual conversation with somebody over at LCRRA, and see if we can get a better deal. And, and it may be that K-Freeze doesn't really have experience with this specific thing. I don't know.
But we can, we can go back to LCRRA and ask that question.
I mean, it's just a thought. I don't, you know, because it isn't just about the cost, but it's also about who it is that's, you know, getting these things done successfully.
Can do.
And there, I, I believe that there are other cities, you know, us and cities to the west that are having to go through this same exercise with LCRRA.
Good point. And that may be a better source of information, sort of a networking thing, or, who knows?
I'm happy to do all of that, and, like I said, I'm not all that pleased with this. I will say, we were trying to move hastily on, on this. It's already moving slower than I would like.
Well, that's part of the question. It's like, do they do this a lot?
Right. I'm also happy to... I'm also happy to have your approval and then not sign this until we do some of this additional due diligence.
That's what I would suggest, is we go ahead and give you authorization, however, allow you to do the research, and if you find a better deal.
Yeah, I'd support that.
I mean, I'm happy to even just have a frank conversation with LCRRA and see if this dollar amount is out of line with what they think it should be, so.
Great idea.
That's a great idea, too.
They may have no idea on that one.
All right.
They may not.
Let's make a motion then to authorize the mayor to make this deal, or a better deal.
So moved.
All right, you have a motion by Ms. Brown, and a second by Mr. McDuffie. I will clarify to expend funds up to, but not to exceed $50,000, $50,525, after first doing additional due diligence. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Being five ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, Council. That is it.
Move to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 You are adjourned.